This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs, Councilmembers Bagley, Cushion, Finley, Levison, Moore, Santos. Mayor Coombs, we have a call.
Okay, let's stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The one wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard will need to add his or her name to a list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on that list will be able to have the opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening, or at the final call, public invited to be heard on any item at the end of the meeting. So we have the May 6 regular session minutes. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move approval of the minutes.
Okay, so let's vote. Mayor, Councilmember Moore.
There is an error in the minutes. I've misspelled Brian Durr's name. So that suggests we make that correction to the minutes. It's at page five. Okay, so noted. Okay, with that correction, let's vote.
Paulie? Okay, pass the seven to zero. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions?
Mayor Coombs, there are no agenda revisions, but there was additional information that was sent to all council members. First of all, for item 8B, Ninth and Hoover rezoning, there was some additional correspondence from some of the residents. And then for item 9E, you should have received information on the cash-in lieu of water rights, what information. So, that's it.
Is there a report from the city manager?
No, Mayor.
All right. I guess we need the first call public invited to be heard. Okay, so we have Dennis Cahalan. Please come down and state your name and address for the record.
Hello. My name is Dennis Cahalan. I live at 7901 Plateau Road. The handout that you have there is a zoom-in of the North Star concept plan. You'll see that later. Our home is one of the white squares in the middle, Lot 2, labeled Cahalan. Our neighbors are the Austencins, adjacent lot, Lot 3. Three minutes is not enough, so I hope you've all had a chance to read my email that I sent you recently. There are two things I'd like to address. The first one is portions of our NUPUD are being considered for development. And I'd like to talk about that. The second one is our front yards are being considered for condemnation for Mount Audubon Road. So on the first topic, the manner in which the land is being developed is illegal. An NUPUD by definition is 75% of its land is undeveloped. So by developing the majority of the landfill's NUPUD, that 75% criterion is no longer met. And the NUPUD ceases to exist. It's effectively dissolved. However, an NUPUD cannot be legally dissolved without unanimous consent of all members of the NUPUD. And really, the members Austenson and Cahalan do not consent. Therefore, development of this land is illegal. On the second topic, condemning our front yards for a major collector road is inconsistent with eminent domain law. It is clear from this drawing, by the way the road is stubbed out to the north and the south of our homes, that the city intends to bulldoze our front yards. Even if the roads are left the way they're shown, stubbed out, there will be problems funneling a wide-paved road to a narrow dirt driveway. So I propose a second emergency access. It may have been in the plan earlier, just south of the roundabout, and it would be north of the Austencins. This would allow access for Lots 2 and 3 to go to the south for ingress egress, and for North Star ingress egress to the north and east. If Longmont, however, insists on having Mount Audubon Road in place, one of the constitutional requirements of eminent domain is necessity. As senior planner Don Burchett stated at a planning meeting in February last year, the road could be built using only the 30-foot easement on the Portico side. So there's an easement along that rest edge there, not even touching our property, that could be used for the road without having to condemn our property. Therefore, condemning our road is not necessary and does not qualify for eminent domain. But a narrow road could go on the Portico side. But where the plan stands, both the Austencins and our property will be significantly devalued. And I would have no option but to take this to court. And I'll let Eric speak for himself, but he's not happy either. That's Eric Austenson, my neighbor. So, anyway, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Bob Schisler? Yeah, could you give it to the clerk this way? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Bob Schisler. I've been a resident in Longmont since June of last year. And my wife and I are retired and decided to move to Longmont, and more specifically, to move into the Prospect neighborhood. We really like the uniqueness there, and we enjoy Longmont and the small-town atmosphere. I have since joined the Board of Directors for the Prospect Homeowners Association, and I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the over 300 residences in the Prospect neighborhood. Our neighborhood swimming pool has been shut down by the city of Longmont just one month before we were scheduled to open it for this year. Apparently, there's a code issue that involves having permanent restroom facilities on the property. This pool's been used by the Prospect neighborhood for the last seven years with temporary restrooms set up each summer, for the three months that we use it each summer. The homeowners' association wasn't aware that this was a problem with this arrangement until just a few weeks ago, when we got the cease and desist letter. We're now in a position that we cannot build permanent new restrooms in time to use the pool this year. I put a little timeline there, so you can just sort of see how this has happened. On April 2nd, the city received a letter from an individual in Prospect that demanded the pool be closed because there's no permanent restrooms there. This person's an individual that doesn't represent all the homeowners in Prospect. And in the last 24 hours, I had a survey done in Prospect that I will leave with you. We've had over 97 people respond, and they highly differ with the opinion of this person who wrote the letter on April 2nd. April 15, the city sent a cease and desist notice to the developer demanding that permanent restrooms be built, or the pool cannot open this year. As member of the board, we immediately requested that the city meet with us so we could discuss this issue. And the city accommodated us and quickly set up a meeting. We met with several city staff people that are listed there on the paper. It was decided that we needed to convene a special session of the Master Board of Appeals to review this issue. So that meeting occurred May 14. And the Board of Appeals, at that meeting, it kind of got bogged down at Code A3, A5, what's required occupancy, is it to be looked like a sports stadium or soccer field. There was a lot of discussion ending in them tabling it and not making a decision. And now it's pushed off till the next meeting in June. So we've been trying to go through the proper process with the city, but we're not getting timely answers. And, you know, why did the city shut the pool down at the last minute, when if we had known about this last year, we would have had time to do something about it? We're asking that this council allow us to open this pool this weekend. Like, you're three minutes, sir. I'm sorry. Can I just finish my last sentence?
Okay.
I'm on my last sentence. We're asking that you let us open it up this weekend with temporary restrooms like we have the last seven years, and let the city make up its mind. We will have that pool in compliance for 2015. So I thank you very much, and I will leave the emails and surveys with you.
Sure. Strider Benson?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, Council. Strider Benson, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. Couple of things have come up just kind of together, and it has to do with, kind of with our legal structure. You may be aware that one Occupy Wall Street protester was just convicted of a felony. What was her crime? Her crime was being sexually assaulted by a policeman. And so she faced possibly seven years in jail. She was just sentenced to 90 days and two years probation, I think. This is for having been assaulted by a policeman. On the other end of the scale, Eric Holder said a couple of weeks ago, there's nobody too big to jail, banks and stuff. Well, what just happened? Yesterday, Credit Suisse was granted an exemption from the investor advisement license, which says you have to report your illegal deposits. They did pay a $2.5 billion fine, and the stock went up. Why did the stock go up? Because all of the criminal activities they've been engaging in for the last decade or so were wiped clean. Put a little drop in the bucket, and you're okay, and all your CEOs and everything. Nobody ever spends a day in jail, or even in court, generally. In '09, UBS was caught doing the same thing, taking illegal money from American depositors, stashing it into illegal secret accounts. But in that case, there was a whistleblower who brought out the names of about 100,000 people. So some of them had to buy their way out. They got off, too. Credit Suisse didn't even have to reveal the names, because they weren't already out in public record. So that will continue, although they have to be a little bit more careful now, because they did pay a $2.5 billion fine. The other thing is the FCC. Michael Powell and Tom Wheeler just traded jobs recently from being the number-one lobbyist for the telecom industry to being the chairman of the FCC. So you see the consolidation. And we lost 760, pro-channel, the last voice of truth and justice for 5 million people on a commercial channel. This is getting desperately serious. Capitalism used to claim that its purpose was competition. Now we see that competition is to be exterminated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready?
Yep. Okay, first, are your second reading in public hearings. First item is ordinance 2014-21, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2014. We do not have a formal staff presentation on this item.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move ordinance... Oh, sorry.
I will now open the public hearing on ordinance 2014-21. Does anyone in the public like to speak on ordinance 024-21? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Finley?
No, I would like to move ordinance 2014-21.
Okay, it can move in second. Let's vote. That passed the seven to zero.
Your next item is ordinance 2014-22, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Ninth Avenue and Hoover Street rezoning from residential low-density R1 to residential planned unit development, PUDR, generally located on the southwest corner of Ninth Avenue and Hoover Street. And Eva Pachajewski from our planning department is here to introduce this.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and councilmembers. Eva Pachajewski, Planning and Development Services. Tonight, this is a public hearing for a proposed rezoning application at the intersection, the southwest intersection of Ninth and Hoover. Just to give you a little orientation there, and I'm sure you're all quite familiar with it, but it's a vacant parcel at the southwest corner. And it's about 15 and a quarter to three-quarter parcels, and it's on the west side of the street. I can't use the pointer on this, but if you look to the north of Ninth Avenue, all of the property north of this is zoned residential PUD or PUDR. That includes the property to the northeast, the Hoover Ridge townhomes, as well as the senior assisted living facility north of it, and then continuing on west on the north side of Hoover. That's all residential PUD. On the east side of Hoover Street and running south, that's all R1, single-family. And then again, all of this property to the west of the project site and moving down, this is all R1, single-family, in the Golden Ponds Estates neighborhood. But this property is zoned R1. And so, in a nutshell, the R1 zoning allows up to five dwelling units per acre. And this side is about 15 and 3/4 acres, so it's allowed 76 homes by right. And the R1 zone in our development code only allows for detached, single-family home lots. And so when the applicant came to us, they were sort of in a quandary, because they do sort of a mixed development type of thing, where they have attached homes, single-family, living there, but attached, as well as the detached. And so that didn't fit quite right with the R1 zoning. And so what is proposed is to change that to residential PUD. The residential PUD is just a PUD, but it allows a range of residential options, including attached, single-family, detached, single-family. It runs the gamut. And so within that property, there's a comprehensive plan, land use designation, and the property has a low-density land use designation. That underlying density allows six dwelling units per acre. So if the zoning were to change, well, right now, we apply the stricter dwelling standard. So we would apply the five dwelling units maximum on the R1. If the request were granted, then they would be allowed six dwelling units per acre instead of five. And so that would allow 91 dwelling units, which is a 15-unit home increase over what's allowed by right currently. And so the proposed concept plan that they have, which I'll show you next, requests 82 dwelling units, which is only six more than they're allowed by right currently. And this, again, the requested zoning is allowing them to have this detached product that wouldn't be allowed in the R1 zone. And the second request also is, and it was in your packets, but there's a Land Development Code section that requires a minimum size for something to be zoned, a piece of property to be zoned, PUD. And that minimum size is 20 acres. So they are 4.77 acres short of the minimum size. However, the development code gives the decision-making body the flexibility to approve a property to be a PUD when it's maybe less than the minimum required, and if you meet certain criteria. And so I kind of stated those in the staff report. But, you know, in general, it's something where it has a creative site design and provides some sort of community amenity that, you know, maybe we wouldn't be able to achieve with the zoning that's there. And so, and again, the applicants are here to give you further discussion about their market. But what they went with at Planning Commission is, you know, they recommended approval of the smaller-size lot for the PUD, because it was creative site design and the amenity was that they were providing additional senior, active senior housing opportunities within the attached buildings. And so here is the concept plan. And again, I don't have a pointer, but on the top is Ninth, and on the right is Hoover. And then on the left is the Golden Ponds Estates neighborhood. And so what they propose here in the concept plan is to do a mix of attached, three-unit buildings along Hoover Street, and then some four-unit buildings along Ninth, and then to keep the single-family detached lots kind of in the center and toward the west. And so that sort of complement with, you know, we have the senior assisted living north of it, so, you know, they're in a building. And then we do have the townhomes that are kitty-corner. And then the single-family residential would sort of be, you know, more blended in with the single-family homes that are in the Golden Ponds Estates neighborhood to the west, and also the single-family homes. Um, they got off too. Credit Suisse didn't even have to reveal the names because they weren't already out in public record. So that will continue, although they have to be a little bit more careful now because they did pay a two and a half billion dollar fine. Um, the other thing is the FCC. Michael Powell and Tom Wheeler just traded jobs recently, uh, from being the number one lobbyist for the telecom industry to being the chairman of the FCC. So you see the consolidation and, um, we lost 760 pro channel, uh, the last voice of truth and justice for five million people on a commercial channel. Um, this is getting desperately serious. Capitalism used to claim that its purpose was competition. Now we see that competition is to be exterminated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, first, um, are your second reading in public hearings. First item is ordinance 2014-21, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2014. We do not have a formal staff presentation on this item.
Captain Member Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move ordinance... Oh, sorry.
I will now open the public hearing on ordinance 2014-21. Does any of the public like to speak on ordinance 024-21? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Captain Member Finley.
No, I would like to move ordinance 2014-21.
Okay, it can move in second. That passes seven to zero.
Your next item is ordinance 2014-22, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Ninth Avenue and Hoover Street rezoning from residential, uh, low-density R1 to residential planned unit development, PUDR, generally located on the southwest corner of Ninth Avenue and Hoover Street. And Eva Pachajewski from our planning department is here to introduce this.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and councilmembers. Eva Pachajewski, Planning and Development Services. Um, tonight, this is a public hearing, uh, for a proposed rezoning application at the intersection, the southwest intersection of Ninth and Hoover. Uh, just to give you a little orientation there, I'm sure you're all quite familiar with it, but it's at the, it's a vacant parcel at the southwest corner and it's about fifteen and a quarter to three-quarter parcels, um, and it's on the west side of the street. Um, I can't use the pointer on this, but if you look to the north of Ninth Avenue, um, all of the property north of this is zoned, uh, residential PUD or PUDR. That includes the property to the northeast, um, the Hoover Ridge, uh, townhomes, as well as the senior assisted living facility north of it, um, and then continuing on west on the north side of Hoover. That's all residential PUD. Uh, to the, on the east side of Hoover Street, um, and running south, that's all R1, single family. Um, and then again, all of this property to the west of the project site and moving down, this is all R1, single family, um, in the Golden Ponds Estates neighborhood. Um, but this property is zoned R1. And so, um, in a nutshell, the R1 zoning allows up to five dwelling units per acre and the site is about fifteen and third acres, so it's allowed seventy-six homes by right. Um, and the R1 zone in our development code only allows for detached, single-family home lots. And so when the applicant came to us, they were sort of in a quandary because they do sort of a mixed development type of thing where they have attached homes, single-family, um, living there, but attached as well as the detached. And so that didn't equip, that didn't fit quite right with the R1 zoning. And so what is proposed is to change that to residential PUD. The residential PUD is just a PUD, but it allows a range of residential options, including, um, attached, single-family, detached, single-family, it runs the gamut. Uh, and so, um, within that, uh, property, there's a comprehensive plan, land use designation, and the property has a low-density land use designation. That underlying density allows six dwelling units per acre. So if the zoning were to change, uh, well, right now, we take the, we apply the stricter dwelling standard, so we would apply the five dwelling units maximum on the R1. If the request were granted, then it, they would be allowed six dwelling units per acre instead of five. And so that would allow ninety-one dwelling units, which is a fifteen-unit home increase over what's allowed by right currently. Uh, and so the proposed concept plan that they have, which I'll show you next, requests eighty-two dwelling units, which is only six more than they're allowed by right currently. Um, and this, again, the requested zoning is allowing them to have this detached product, um, that wouldn't be allowed in the R1 zone. And the second request also is, um, and it was in your packets, but there's a land development code section that requires a minimum size for something to be zoned, a piece of property to be zoned PUD, and that minimum size is twenty acres. So they are four point seven seven acres short of the minimum size. However, the development code gives the decision-making body the flexibility to approve, um, a property to be a PUD when it's maybe less than the minimum required and if you meet certain criteria. And so I kind of stated those in the staff report, but, um, you know, in general, it, you know, it's something where that has a creative site design and provides some sort of community amenity that, you know, maybe we wouldn't be able to achieve with the zoning that's there. And so, um, and again, the applicants are to give you further discussion about their market, but, um, what they went with at Planning Commission is, you know, this, they recommended approval of the smaller size lot for the PUD because it was creative site design and the amenity was that they were providing additional senior, active senior housing opportunities, uh, within the attached buildings. And so here is the concept plan, and again, I don't have a pointer, but on your, on the top is Ninth and on the right is Hoover, um, and then on the left is the Golden Ponds Estates neighborhood. Uh, and so what they propose here in the concept plan is to do a mix of attached three-unit buildings along Hoover Street and then some four-unit buildings along Ninth, and then to keep the single-family detached lots kind of in the center and toward the west. And so that sort of complement with, you know, we have the, uh, senior assisted living north of it, so, you know, they're in a building and then we do have the townhomes that are kitty-corner. Um, and then the single-family residential would sort of be, you know, more blended in with the single-family homes that are in the Golden Ponds Estates neighborhood to the west and also the single-family homes to the south. Um, as far as access, the, this concept plan shows that access would be provided along Ninth Avenue and a second point of access would be provided down on the southwest corner, uh, where there's a street called Teal Avenue that's currently, uh, in the Golden Ponds Estates neighborhood and it stubs out into this property. Um, it was always expected that if there were any future development, that this would carry through and create interconnected neighborhoods. Uh, and so that is how the project, uh, concept plan looks like. So in April, uh, this, uh, item went to Planning Commission for a public hearing. Um, there were many residents, uh, from the Golden Ponds Estates neighborhood and they had some traffic concerns. Um, it was a little bit of a surprise to us as staff because I know that I had sent notices out to the neighbors here, to the HOA president and to the neighborhood group leader association president and asked for feedback. I had gotten no feedback. So our thoughts going into the public hearing was that everyone was, uh, thought that this was an acceptable concept plan. Um, nevertheless, they did come and, and they were very concerned about traffic. Um, and so one of the main concerns was about access and the fact that, um, the development would take access onto Teal and maybe add some traffic toward that neighborhood. Um, and some speakers, uh, were suggested that maybe there should be an additional access on Hoover Street. So, um, we did talk about the traffic study a little bit, um, and we noted that the traffic study did indicate that that was one option among many. Um, the applicant came back and rebutted and noted that, you know, we had a neighborhood meeting on this project before they filed a formal application and, um, there were some residents from the neighborhood to the east, on the east side of Hoover. They weren't really supportive of an access point on Hoover, so when they filed their application, they took off that access on Hoover. So that's sort of the history on that. And so I think with all the discussion about it, um, the applicant asked, requested P&amp;Z to provide them with some direction and say, do you, do you want, uh, do you want an access on Hoover or do you like the concept plan as it is? Um, and so, um, Planning Commission, they, again, they took the testimony about all sides, um, and ultimately voted seven to zero and recommended approval of the concept plan as it is. And so the Planning Commission minutes are in your packet. Um, I also have, if, if there's any other discussion about the traffic study, we do have Tyler Stamey here, our, um, city traffic engineer. And so if you have any specific questions about the data or what the traffic study said, uh, we do have Tyler here. We also, of course, have the applicants, David Gregg and David Euler from Boulder Creek Builders, and their traffic engineer who wrote the traffic study is here. So, um, we do have some resources here. Um, and so in sum, you know, there are three options here, um, obviously, which we laid out in the council comm, but you can approve the rezoning ordinance and the concept plan that was provided to you with the access points, uh, or you can go with a conditional approval after listening to some of the testimony tonight, um, and consider possibly finding an additional access point must be added to any future plots or development plans. So you can conditionally approve it. And then the third option, obviously, is just to deny it and just say this doesn't meet any of the review criteria. And so that concludes my presentation. Um, the applicant also has a presentation, but I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Eva right this morning?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Oh, Captain Member Christiansen.
Um, so I'm a little confused. We aren't going to have an access point from Hoover?
No.
Okay. No, no access point. Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is David Gregg. I'm with Boulder Creek Neighborhood, one of the owners and partners. Uh, we're a locally owned and homegrown, uh, Boulder County Home Building Company and specializing in senior-friendly, uh, low-maintenance, single-story, active adult patio homes. Uh, here before you tonight to, um, look at a rezone, uh, application as well as a sketch plan and get your feedback. As Eva mentioned, uh, subject properties on the southwest corner of Ninth and Hoover. The request is, um, for five point three two dwelling units per acre. Uh, Longmont Comp Plan designates this site as low-density residential with an allowable density of up to six dwelling units per acre. Uh, the rezonance necessary is mentioned primarily due to the, uh, attached, single-family homes along the arterials over the Ninth. Those townhomes, uh, for us on a fifteen-acre site, um, provide, uh, an element of affordability and variety that we wouldn't otherwise have if it was all entirely, single-family detached. Uh, it's compatible with the attached, uh, subdivisions, uh, across the street to the north, northwest and northeast. And, um, uh, even in doing the rezon, the underlying comp plan designation, uh, of a maximum six dwelling units per acre would remain in force. Um, the, the density of the townhomes is appropriately clustered adjacent to the arterials with the single-family detached, uh, adjacent to the western and southern neighbors. And that feathering continues even further with our choice for the park and detention, uh, open space facility, um, adjacent to the majority of the, um, immediately contiguous neighbors to the southwest. As mentioned, um, we've had a lot of, uh, discussion about the access to the site. And so I wanted to touch on a little bit of the history of the decision-making process that brought us to this point. Um, first, to start the discussions, um, regarding the street network and the design considerations, I'll take you back to the original, uh, very high-level concept sketch that we, um, came up with, uh, initially met with staff in a pre-application conference. It showed the, the three possible connections, Hoover, Ninth and Teal Circle. And we sort of opened the book to the staff and said, you know, give us your thoughts, give us your, your, um, ideas about what would be appropriate, uh, for this. This was the very beginning of our, of our conversations. They asked us to commission a traffic study to see what the engineering tells us and to hold a neighborhood meeting. We did hold a neighborhood meeting. Uh, we had good attendance. Twenty-six individuals or couples were on the sign-up sheet. Uh, good, uh, representation from both sides of the project with, um, eight addresses, uh, on Riviera, which is the, the intersection to our east, as well as eight Allen and Teal Circle addresses. Uh, the proponents of the feedback at that neighborhood meeting and all the discussions surrounding access, uh, really centered on Hoover being a, a safety concern to the residents east of us. Uh, and the, their, their safety concerns being exacerbated if we were to connect our project directly onto Hoover. There was very little comment about the, uh, access to the west at the neighborhood meeting. Um, we followed up with staff after that meeting, asked if they had heard what we had heard, which was Hoover was a safety concern. Uh, they did. They said, let's see what the traffic report says. Um, very shortly after the neighborhood meeting, we did get the final traffic report back. It studied at our direction, three different scenarios for access onto the site. Scenario one being what we've presented tonight with access to Ninth and to Teal. Uh, scenario two was to have all three accesses and scenario three would be only Hoover and Ninth, not connecting onto Teal. The, um, scenario number one, which is what we came forward with, was the preferred and recommended alternative in the traffic engineering study. And speak a little bit about where the, uh, the nature of that, uh, recommendation comes from, uh, Mr. Jeff Hodson, who's a principal with, uh, our traffic engineer with the Transportation Consultants, Inc., is here to speak a little bit about, uh, that decision-making process.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Jeff Hodson with LSC Transportation Consultants. And we prepared the traffic study. And let me, I guess my slides are up there. We, um, thirty questions on the scenarios. David went through the scenarios, the three different access scenarios fairly well. So basically, we, we went through our study and evaluated the three access scenarios and our recommendation is to go with scenario number one, which has, uh, basically access to the north and I, access to the west to, uh, Teal and, and then future access to the south once the parcel is to the south developed, but no access to Hoover. Um, basically, the reason is in your land development code, and this is general, uh, philosophy in traffic engineering is access management. And your land development code states that a vehicle access shall generally be directed to the lower, lower-volume streets first and then to the higher-volume streets. And also in your, uh, engineering criteria manual, it says there should be no, no direct access from any private property to an arterial unless no other alternative access is available or variance to the section has been approved. So it's in your city code, it's general traffic engineering practice to take access as much as you can to the lower hierarchy of streets. Your local streets connect into your collectors, your collectors connect into arterials. And what that gives you, uh, with your collector spacing, you get, your intersections along arterials are farther apart and your, uh, access points are farther apart, which makes arterials function better and safer. So under my first point here, um, an access to Hoover for the project, we felt would add an unnecessary additional access to Hoover, the high-volume arterial, the most, highest volume adjacent arterial, uh, when there's already several access points along there. It's already sort of, has too many access points for an arterial as it is. And it's kind of adding to that proliferation of access points, if you will, that, um, and when you get those proliferation of access points, what you end up with, uh, you keep adding additional traffic conflict points. And I'll show you a little slide. Your traffic engineer has seen this one, I'm sure. Uh, the one on the right, that's, that's a T-intersection. That's what the, the streets and the cul-de-sacs on the, on the east side of Hoover have today because without any access to this property, you basically have six conflict points with the T-intersection. Much easier to negotiate a T-intersection. Now, the one on the left, that's, that's a diagram showing the, the twenty-four conflict points of traffic for a four-way, full-movement intersection. Now, we're talking about a three-quarter movement intersection, which eliminates the left-out and the straight across, but the point I'm trying to make is the more access you have and the more they line up and you have conflicting movements across from each other, you've got, you keep adding conflict points, which, uh, it's generally shown that, uh, you know, a large number of access points and conflicting movements create, lead to more, generally lead to more crash, higher crash rates. So basically what we see here, kind of on the left side, we see with an access to Hoover, you're going to see more difficulty for traffic from the east side to make those left turns, you know, coming out of the east side to go south on Hoover. So it's going to complicate, um, uh, movements for those residents on the other side. Uh, because as I mentioned, the intersections on the east side is Ts, as T-intersections are easier to, easier to negotiate, so. So as I mentioned, this is, uh, the second part of our recommendation. The first part, as I mentioned on the other slide, had to do with, uh, with the reasons no access to Hoover is recommended. Uh, mentioned that the access to Hoover is unnecessary. And here's the reason it's unnecessary is because a connection to Teal Avenue to Allen Drive, uh, Allen Drive will be able to accommodate the traffic from, from this project without the access to Hoover. Keep in mind, there's still also an access to Ninth to the north, uh, full-movement access on that street. And that was a bit of a compromise to add an access to an arterial. Uh, it's the lower of the two classifications of arterial onto Ninth. So let's talk about Allen Drive and how it can accommodate the traffic. Basically, the existing traffic volume on Allen Drive is about four hundred and seventy-five vehicles per day. That's twenty-four hours during the weekday, both directions. Uh, with some additional development in that quadrant of those, you know, kind of that southwest quadrant of Ninth and Hoover, there's some potential for some additional development beyond this project. There's some vacant land. So we put together what we call a future baseline, which is built out of that area, not including this project. Could see the numbers go up to about five hundred and that's again, our baseline traffic number, not including this project. The site traffic in this scenario one, we projected about a hundred and seventy-five vehicles per day could be added to Allen Drive. So the total future traffic kind of, and there's not, it's not a very large area we're talking about. There's only so much development that can occur there. The entire kind of neighborhood area at buildout, we see a potential for a future traffic volume of six hundred and seventy-five vehicles per day on Allen. And, you know, in your code, basically, the, for local streets, the capacity or design ADT, the preferable number you want to stay below in terms of daily traffic on a local street is two thousand five hundred daily vehicle trips on, on that sort of street. So as you can see, we're basically nineteen percent right now of the capacity or design ADT of that street. Uh, site traffic would add another seven percent, maybe another one percent for the future undeveloped land, uh, that could, um, in addition to this project, that could be developed. So at buildout of that quadrant area, you're talking at buildout about twenty-seven percent of capacity for, uh, Allen Drive. So the street can handle the traffic, so there's no need to, to add an access to Hoover when it's not necessary. The, um, one couple more points is about Allen. Basically, Allen provides a connection, uh, through, it connects on one end to Ninth, it connects on the other end down to Hoover. So it basically in, in function, it functions like a collector. It goes through an area, it collects traffic from the adjacent, near, from the properties in that quadrant and it, it connects to two intersections on two arterials. So it's, and then your comprehensive plan shows it as a minor neighborhood collector street as, as well. So that's what it's, was intended to function as a collector. If this project weren't, if this project were built with the rest of the development at one time, we wouldn't be talking about access to the arterials probably. We'd be talking about access to Allen as the collector street that connects to the arterials, so. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the traffic study or our analysis of this.
Captain Member Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, on the, uh, on page ninety-five of the packet, there's an arrow that looks like at some point there's going to be a third exit from the neighborhood. Is that what that is?
Let's see. Is it to the south?
Yes.
That's, um, it's my understanding that, that our client provided a, a future, uh, street connection, so if the parcel to the south develops, there could be a future connection, uh, to serve those properties or to provide a connection through all the way to the south for neighborhood circulation.
Also, there's two currently for sure and then maybe a third.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I thought that presentation was crystal clear. You did a good job.
Thank you.
Captain Member Robinson.
Yes, I don't have a question, traffic question for you. I have a question from one of our traffic engineers that I can ask Tyler. I don't know where I saw it, but some, some meeting or something I read recently talked about, um, a future CIP project that would widen Hoover even further. Can you, I guess Nick's coming, I asked the wrong person. Sorry, Nick.
No problem.
Did you give us a presentation like a week ago about this and like things are just rattling around?
Good evening, Nicole from Engineering.
See, I remember something that you talked about. Oh, my goodness.
I was up here just a week or so ago.
Yeah.
And we talked about an update to our, um, uh, uh, street plan component of, of the master plan. And in that, we identified one of the projects that was very high priority and that was widening Hoover to six lanes, but that only went up to, um, Boston and Rogers Road. It didn't continue north from there.
Okay. But would, uh, the anticipation is that we'd still have same kind of volume almost be, I mean, we're not expecting all that six lanes to exit on Boston.
No, but the volumes do reduce as they go up and that mainly gives you increased capacity through the intersections of Nelson, uh, 119. capacity through the intersections of Nelson, 119, Clover Basin. And so that added north-south capacity makes those intersections, which are very congested, and in this case, those intersections really control our capacity on that corridor. That allows the traffic to get through those quicker, and so it would flow better through there.
Well, and what I'm getting at is having remembered that presentation, it seems logical that we wouldn't really, knowing how much more volume Hoover's going to be taking in the future, that we really wouldn't want to be sending people onto Hoover going uphill from a site.
Yeah, we're not trying to draw more traffic onto that. We're trying to deal with the traffic we have. We're still trying to utilize Airport Road as another corridor that gives you, that gives through traffic a better alternative for moving around through that corridor, north-south to.
I'm just trying to piece together the logic of what you were talking about to the back. It wasn't surprising that the traffic study indicates it's probably not a really good idea to add more coming onto Hoover.
It anticipates, that traffic study that we did anticipated all of this development and the build-out of these areas into the background traffic that was programmed there. So the improvements that we're talking about anticipate redevelopment of the mall, development of this other greenfield developments, and redevelopment of some of those areas.
So and then just since you're up there, the indication of that arrow that was just asked about, we would really want to connect neighborhoods through the south part of this site so that if, when that next parcel comes in, that would be one of those traffic street layouts that we would want to have as part of a concept plan.
Otherwise, it's trapped being just a cul-de-sac, for example, off of Hoover, which is what we're trying to avoid.
All right, great. Thank you.
I don't see any further questions. I, oh, okay, you still need to continue some.
Now I have to go Paul Harvey and give the rest of the story. So with the traffic report in hand, scenario one recommended, the feedback from the neighborhood meeting being, the preponderance of that being to avoid access onto Hoover. And frankly, our preference leaning that way too, after hearing some of the testimony of the concerns for safety and some of those sorts of things. We came forward with the street network that we've shown tonight to the P&amp;Z meeting. And just as disproportionate as the feedback was at our neighborhood meeting to not access off of Hoover, the feedback at the P&amp;Z meeting from the public was just disproportionately the other direction, saying, please don't funnel your traffic onto Teal and Allen, please take it out onto Hoover. So having that now, as the more recent public feedback, and anticipating that tonight you're going to hear probably a lot from both sides of our subdivision, we decided to dig a little deeper to see if there was some support for what we were presenting, just so that we can make a thoroughly considered decision and do all our due diligence. Here's what we found from the Longmont Municipal Code, and I'll just summarize. The number of intersections and curb cuts on streets and highways shall be minimized, and this is to provide the greatest safety possible for pedestrians and motorists. Vehicle accesses shall generally be directed to lower volume streets first and then to higher volume streets. Those are both from the Longmont Municipal Code. The Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan, if you see where the red arrow is pointing, that's pointing to Allen Drive, which is designated on the, in the mapping for the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan as a neighborhood collector street. So it was contemplated in the comprehensive plan to draw the traffic from those subneighborhoods and funnel them out to the arterials. Also from the municipal code, local streets shall provide interconnected neighborhoods. And to speak to Nerpro Tam Bagley's question, the very reason that we're stubbing a road to the south is for that future connectivity, just as the developer at Teal was required at that time by the city to stub to our parcel. And then also from the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan, neighborhood collector streets shall channel traffic from the neighborhoods to the arterials and primary and neighborhood collectors to move traffic to and from neighborhoods to the arterials. So we did find a lot of support in the governance documents of Longmont. Lastly, and this is purely anecdotal, we feel like a very small percentage of people will actually choose to use the Allen Route. It is over double the length, circuitous, and you arrive at an unsignaled intersection to gain access onto Hoover. We really truly feel that, and what we want is for our senior buyers to make the choice to head north to the signalized intersection where they can make much safer movements. And certainly, in my opinion, the worst of the three examples isn't illustrated here, and that would be an unsignaled mid-block access on Hoover, which is why we didn't present it. So after considering it even further, given the feedback in the public comment at the P&amp;Z meeting, this is what we've come forward with tonight, continuing forward with scenario number one. So with that long traffic conversation as preamble, I actually now get to talk about the fun stuff, what we are all about, and that's what's really exciting. Our request is to rezone from R1 to PUDR. The purpose of that is so that we can attach homes to get more variety and affordability on 15 acres. 15 acres to us feels a little bit too big for a single type of product. We wanted to have a mix of price points and uses. We do senior-friendly, low-maintenance, main-floor living patio homes. That is the entirety, those ranch plans, senior-friendly homes of the single-family detached. It is also a large portion of the single-family attached townhomes. The townhomes are kind of a fun concept. I'll show you a picture of it in a little bit. With the bookends on the townhomes being our on-message, senior-friendly designs, which means you have a single-story architecture, which is what is presented to the public rights-of-way on the outside. There's a reason we focus on this type of housing. The senior demographic is significantly underserved in the marketplace right now with appropriate housing for their specific and particular needs. The traditional builders continue to crank out traditional family-oriented housing for the 2.5 kids and the dog and the privacy fenced backyard, and that's fine, they can do that. The reason we do what we do is represented on this graph, which is from DOLA, and it's, it shows population growth in Boulder County. And the senior population will double in the next decade. All of the other population demographics remain fairly stagnant. The Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan promotes options for Longmont's residents and promotes the availability of housing types that are in short supply, and that's what we provide. The media has coined a term for what this graph shows. It's called the senior tsunami. It's the coming growth of that market demographic. Our concept is supported by the comprehensive plan, which encourages a wide range of housing for all demographics and citizens. Briefly, as a representation of what we do, this would be a representative floor plan, and it's a little hard to read, but all of those leaders in text are pointing to senior-friendly accessible features, which are standard in our homes. Everything from wider hallways and doors to oversized roll-in showers, zero steps to the outdoor living, et cetera, et cetera, all ease-of-living features for a senior buyer. We think we have a low-impact, high-quality exterior presentation to the community. The predominance of ranch plans gives us a less vertical massing, which is very pleasing. And our buyers are downsizing in footage, but not in quality. And sometimes I like to characterize them as the folks who buy a BMW over a Chevy. They expect the high-quality exterior design, the tasteful use of materials, and we provide that for them. Our exteriors are a step up from traditional production housing. What we would like to bring to this project is a next-generation design. That's why we only have renderings of our latest version of our senior-friendly plans. We're always improving the livability, the accessibility, the senior-friendly features, so we're actually going to be bringing an updated series to this project. The project will be HOA-maintained, covenant-controlled, a real lock-and-leave environment for an active senior adult. And briefly, I mentioned the attached product. This is a fourplex, and as you can see, the end units, the bookends, are our on-message, senior-friendly, main-floor living ranch plans. What that does is it presents a much softer, single-story roofline to the public rights-of-way, to the streets. That's what you see from the roadways or the ends of those buildings. The front doors then are on what we call a landscape pedestrian street rather than cars. The interior units, though, provide a more affordable option for a younger subset of our buyers that we affectionately call the nevermasters. They want some of the same maintained and lock-and-leave features as the seniors, and they can get it in a more affordable price with the interior units. So in conclusion, we believe we bring forward a tasteful, well-thought-out design for an underserved senior population, well-executed by a local builder. I'm joined here tonight by Vice President of Development Operations, our civil engineer on the project, as well as our traffic engineer that you've already met. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have, and I look forward to answering those questions for you.
Councilmember Robinson. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So you mentioned HOA, which, what would you anticipate the dues being?
We have varying levels of service that we, depending on the location and the demographic and the price point of the homes, but they will land somewhere either side of $200 per month. And that's a rather all-inclusive HOA dues. That's not just paying for watering a common area. That's also taking care of all of the landscaping on lot, exterior maintenance, snow removal, sometimes a number of other.
You mean like snow removal to the front door?
Snow removal to the front door, landscape maintenance to the front door, all four sides.
You have several different products there.
We don't privacy fence our backyards, so those are maintained as well.
What would your range of price points look like?
We think the townhomes are going to be in the 300s, and the single-family detached are high series to low fours. That's a very preliminary estimate.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Robinson.
I think this is a great, it looks like a great development, and I want to thank you and congratulate you for taking on something that very few developers do, which is both a mix of different age groups, but also accessibility for not only senior citizens, but people who are just disabled. And, you know, so it's the same thing. But it's something, I think it's a good location for this. I think it's a thoughtful development. Thank you.
Just one more question on, I'm assuming by the quality and stuff that these things are going to be pretty energy-efficient because a lot of seniors are on fixed incomes?
They are, and for exactly that reason, we for many years now have been far exceeding the code and municipal requirements. We're Energy Star, five-star plus. We tend to exceed the Energy Star and code requirements by sometimes 15%, 20%. And it's specifically for the ongoing savings of monthly income for a fixed-income senior.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Finlay.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Can you give me a timeline of when you would develop this development?
We would anticipate it will be in entitlements for most of the rest of this year, unfortunately. It's just the way the process goes and the amount of time it takes. So if all goes well, we would hope to be breaking ground early, first or second quarter next year.
Okay. Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, I'll now open this up for public hearing on ordinance 2014-22. First, we have on the list, Eileen Kavanaugh.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and City Councilmembers. My name is Eileen Kavanaugh, 2210 Riviera Place in here in Longmont. My family and I have lived on Riviera Place since 1970, and over the years, it's been increasingly difficult to drive in or drive out a Riviera Place because of the ever-increasing volume on Hoover Road. To add any more ingress or egress openings along Hoover at this time would pose a serious threat to my family's health and safety and to that of my neighbors. Traffic studies made in conjunction with this project, which Boulder County, Boulder Neighborhood is posing, they've all advised against any more cuts on Hoover, and I totally support that fully. The developer is not asking for these cuts. Certainly, we are not. Any connection to Hoover is not in the best interest of my neighborhood, and many of my neighbors here tonight support that also. So respectfully, I ask that you do not allow any more cuts on Hoover. We support this, although it may be think it's a wonderful addition to our neighborhood, but we certainly oppose cuts on Hoover for our safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Rex Hartman, I live at 2201 Riviera Place here in Longmont, and I am here to support the annexation, or no, excuse me, the rezoning, excuse me. And I do believe this development is going to be an ideal improvement for the neighborhood. However, I am concerned about the discussion about the annexation, or the, I keep wanting to say annexation, ingress and egress off of Hoover for this development. This is, would really cause a lot of problems for us in the Riviera Neighborhood, as well as just people trying to, you know, going up and down Hoover itself. The traffic, as you all know, is horrendous on that street. Even the city maintenance people cut off the auto bond, and it really is, and sometimes during the day. So again, I support this, this development, but certainly not an access off of Hoover for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to all. My name is Joyce Hartman. I live at 2201 Riviera Place, and Rex and I have lived there since 1987. And ever since we have lived there, Hoover has gotten increasingly horrible as far as getting on and off and making our way where we need to go. It's always been a traffic threat. So we've had to practice a lot of patience. So I am here to say that I think the development plan itself is very nice, but I am totally opposed to any ingress or egress onto Hoover Road. And this is for the safety of our families, neighbors, friends, and the whole community. Because of traffic, there's more people on the planet, there's more youngsters learning how to drive, there's just more traffic. And it would definitely be continually becoming more unsafe. So I also wanted to say that I'm hopeful that a fair, objective decision can be reached on this, not based on people's emotions, but based on the reality of the situation and what is in the best interest for all. I thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Anton Borak. Borak?
Sorry, I've known you for 25 years. It's okay.
It's all right.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is Anton Borak, and I live at 425 Longview Court. Longview is off of Long's Peak, just a couple blocks east of Hoover. My parents built my house in 1971, and it's my pleasure to continue to live there 43 years later, and hope to die there in the much distant future. Also point out- I'd also point out that I bought my house from my parents. I don't live with my parents. Clear the record there. I am very much in support of this rezoning parcel. My parents and Mrs. Kavanaugh have thought many years to respect that zoning, and finally, there is a great use for that parcel, and I'm looking forward to it. I am absolutely against another road cut into Hoover, however, it just is extremely dangerous. Those of us that live near it, we consider Hoover a beast. You know, we have to think about when we can get on Hoover, what time of day works for us. You creep out, you have to worry about the bicycles coming back and forth. It just is, you know, so to have another cut is just to make a bad situation that much worse. So with that, I strongly hope you approve the rezoning with the condition that there not be an additional access on Hoover. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at this time on ordinance 2014-22? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Bagley.
So we want more access to Hoover?
No.
I actually lived at 905 Hoover Ridge. That was the first home my wife and I lived in after we got out of the apartment phase. It was with great jubilation. I moved it when we passed ordinance 2014-22.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. So basically, you're approving the rezoning and the concept plan as presented?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is ordinance 2014-23, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to amend the lease of real property known as Vance Grand Municipal Airport Hangar, Parcel 4, to CAG International, Inc., doing business as Elite Aviation. And I believe Tim Barth had a presentation on this? But Tim's not here, so maybe Sean will do it.
Mayor, members of council, the document before you is a lease that's consistent with the presentation that you heard about a month and a half ago. This was from Iron Ridge UAV, and they were requesting your preliminary support for the city to apply for a certificate of authorization that would allow us to use these, is this not the right item?
No. Yeah. It's the lease amendment.
This is the lease amendment. I think it was the other one that we want, there's another item.
Sorry, Councilman Santos, you threw me off there. It is, it is a lease. What it is, it's approving the city to lease the aircraft from Iron Ridge. And so this would allow us to then lease the hangar to Iron Ridge. But first, we actually have to lease the aircraft in order to apply for the certificate of authorization.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing on, let's see, this would be ordinance 2014-23. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this, this time? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. And Sean, not to throw you off, but the way it was sounding, it was like, this was the lease agreement, this is the lease amendment for Elite Aviation, so sorry if I threw you off. So with that, I would move ordinance 2014-23.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. All right. Who do you want to take like a five-minute break?
Are you going to present? Present a presentation for the public hearing on CDBG?
Oh, no, let's see. We do have, all right, let's just do finish, let's do D first. Okay, let's do the...
Okay.
Yeah.
The last public hearing is Public Hearing Amendment 1202 to the 2012 Community Block Grant Action Plan, and Kathy Fudler does have a short presentation on this one.
Okay.
She's looking like, what? Yeah, just get through all of eight.
Mayor and Council, Kathy Fudler, CDBG Coordinator, and no one ever wants to talk at my public hearing, so this should go really quickly.
Why would you say that?
Yeah, somebody will be here. So this is a proposed change to reallocate funds from the home-funded Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program to fund soft costs, allowing the Prairie Village Senior Affordable Rental Housing Project to do its due diligence and determine whether or not it should move forward. The Housing and Human Services Advisory Board considered this request at their May 8 meeting and moved to approve the amendment. So what the Housing Authority has found, as they've been operating the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program, providing rent assistance to the homeless for the past, I think we started in about 2007, 2008, is it's kind of played itself out to a certain extent, also having issues with our current rental market right now. So what we're finding is that folks cannot find a place to rent. Even if they have rent assistance, they can't find a place to rent, and we can't hold the vouchers open forever, and so it is resulting in just a big logjam and raising people's hopes, and it's just not a good situation. So the Housing Authority determined through an analysis of the program that it would be better if they turned back in the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance funding that they had not had committed, and allow the city to reconsider what to fund with those funds, and then in the interim, we will work on what other opportunities we might be able to provide in place of that Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program. You probably have heard me talk about Housing First programs in the past that provide actual physical units along with supportive services. That probably would be a better way to go than providing rent assistance where people are scattered around, and then trying to provide services to them, et cetera. So it fit a purpose at the time, it's kind of not meeting what we were hoping that it would right now. So what we're supporting is to use at least part of the funds, $143,000 of the funds that have been turned back in, to provide soft costs for the development of Prairie Village First Phase, a 60-unit senior rental site for households below 50% of the area median income. As you know, we, the Housing Authority recently opened Hearthstone after the lodge, and that was a total of 100 senior units, and we already have a 300-unit waitlist, even though that Hearthstone just opened last year. So there's a great need, as even David Gregg had alluded to, for housing for seniors. This funding would provide eligible expenses under the home program, like architectural costs, engineering, all those soft costs to get ready to develop a project and to really, to kind of do the due diligence around Phase One environmental appraisal, et cetera, to get ready to seek other funding for the actual construction. This project would also help, to a certain extent, provide some replacement housing for flood victims. So we did have some elderly folks that were displaced as a result of the flood from Royal, as well as from Park Manor, which is right across the river from that. And so this would give preference, once it's built, to flood victims. A lot of those folks have found housing, but it would give preference to flood victims in the future as soon as it is built. They do anticipate if this does go forward, and they're going to have their neighborhood meeting June, in June, so it's not, you know, all the way through, but if it does go forward, that they would be seeking low-income housing tax credits as well as CDBG DR funding. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise, we can go to the public hearing.
I don't see any questions, so I'll open this up for public hearing. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on Amendment 12-02? I guess seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. I move we approve Amendment Number 12-02 to the 2012 CBD, CDBG Action Plan. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
All right, thank you.
All right, let's take a five-minute break. I gotta stretch my legs.[1224.01] I gotta stretch my legs.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. It's come to our attention that ordinance 2014-23, which is the Elite Aviation leasement that needs to be brought back for reconsideration, the lease is not quite done yet. So with that, I move to reconsider ordinance 2014 dash 23.
Second. All right, she's been moved and seconded. Assistant City Manager Lewis?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you guys can.
Okay, okay. Let's go ahead and vote first. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Go ahead, Tom. Mayor Coombs, members of council. Councilmember Santos was somewhat right when he was questioning the item that we were presenting. This will teach him to never leave town again and ask the city attorney's office and I to pitch hit for him. The lease that you actually did approve, that you are now reconsidering, right after you all discussed that at first reading, the company came to us, Iron Ridge came to us and said, "We would actually like to move our entire operation to the airport." Elite Aviation agreed to that. Unfortunately, that takes a new contract, a revised contract, that allows some non-aviation uses. As you know, they are a manufacturer of various things, one of which is the UAVs, which is obviously an aeronautical use. However, in order to facilitate their entire relocation to the airport, that will require some modifications to the lease. So what we'd like you to do is actually open the public hearing for the first reading and then table the item so that we can bring back a revised contract for you for next, second reading at your next meeting.
But we already did open.
Excuse me, so the public hearing will be for second reading, but you will take no action or rather table it, and then we can bring back the revised version of the contract at the next meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question, we did have a public hearing. So we did open it up for a public hearing, so all we need to do is basically table this instead of.
Approve it.
Correct. So we had a public.
City Attorney.
Well, Eugene.
Mayor and Councilmember Santos, Eugene May, City Attorney. So what should we consider bringing? Actually, it does bring you back to the point at which you reconsidered the vote.
That's right.
That would be post hearing.
Yep, you're right.
Thanks. All those years in Congress and people still questioning. So Mayor, with that, I would move to table ordinance 2014 dash 23 until such time the lease is ready to be brought back to council.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember More, I guess my only question is, what other things other than building drones do they want to do at the airport? I have no problem building drones and airport type stuff, but turning the airport into an industrial park would concern me. So what's the, what's the other stuff they do?
Iron Ridge manufacturing manufactures small component parts for certain firearms, handguns, rifles, et cetera, that are then shipped and distributed. So that's the non-aviation use. It is something that's called for both in the target industry study and the airport master plan, that if a company produces manufacturing, as long as they have an aviation component, that's recommended that we allow those kind of ancillary uses, if you will, at the airport. Certainly, that's a decision for city council, but that's the revised contract and presentation that the company would like to bring back at the next meeting.
Okay, I guess the next meeting I'm gonna have, I've got some concerns, I'm not pro or against, but the policy question is, do we want to permit manufacturing at the airport rather than in industrial areas or commercial areas? So I will think about it and ponder it until our next meeting, so.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So they're changing the lease, is that correct?
Councilmember Moore, yes, sir.
So why wouldn't I have to come back for first reading? If it's gonna be a new lease, why would we have to start the process over?
Attorney Ed Gosses in the city attorney's office believes that the change is insignificant in terms of the overall lease document, the provisions that you're passing, and so he believes that this could come back for second reading with the few words that would be added to allow for those manufacturing uses as well as the aviation uses.
So second reading on the new lease would also have public.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We could certainly bring it back as first reading as well. We simply thought for speed and efficiency that we could bring this back for second, but we could also bring it back for first.
I just see it as a change, you know, total change, really. When you think about contract language, it's like, it's not the same contract.
We'd be glad to bring it back as first reading as well, if that's the council's preference.
Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you. I guess we could also hold a, another, we can have an option of holding additional public hearing on the item, even though we've held public hearing once, that we could solicit public hearing, a second public hearing on the matter. The other, going to Councilmember Bagley's point, if you can ascertain or ask the question about what the percentage of manufacturing, the total manufacture that's going to occur between the various manufactured items or activities, are we talking about this is 30% of the business or 50%? And also what impact it would have on time of day use at the airport? Because if it ends up being a lot of different traffic uses that might impede aviation uses at the airport, or, you know, get in the way of people getting to their hangars with semis and what the access road is capable of, that would be of a concern to me.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So just here thinking, I think that, I don't, I think it's a mistake to allow people to lease hangars, residential or industrial, if the primary purpose is not primarily aviation related. Because if they have an aviation purpose, you know, you can do anything and throw in an aviation purpose. Oh, well, we own an airplane, or, you know, we own a drone, or, and I just think that right now you can get a hangar out there, you know, it was for rent today for $210. You know, people are, I mean, it doesn't take much math to figure out, hey, I can, I can get cheap land out there at the airport. It should be cheap because it's fostering our aviation industry and our local aviation culture, and I just, I just think we need to think long and hard before we start allowing non-aviation businesses, primarily non-aviation businesses out there. Because I can, I can picture cargo being loaded and unloaded onto trucks, I can picture the cultural impact it would have on the airport, and I, I just, I just don't think we should do it so without somebody who knows more than us, or me at least, before we pull the trigger saying, well, this is what's likely to happen. Do other airports do this? What has happened when they've done that? Those are the kind of questions I'm gonna have next time.
You know, we've got a motion to table it, and if we vote to table it, then we do have another opportunity to answer all these questions next time, so we've got time to think about it and, you know, flush all these issues out. You know, it makes more sense to me, since I consider this a small change, just to bring this back on second reading, because we still can have the public hearings.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. And that's what I was gonna say, is that it's my understanding, my understanding that the main focus is going to be aviation first now for Iron Ridge, and the other part is secondary, it's kind of just a secondary business model for them. But, you know, let's, I know Sean and I have gone and talked with another UAV company, and, you know, they also do models, not, but not just UAV. So, you know, the idea is to have manufacturing at the airport that is, or that is aviation-driven, but you also have to consider that not every manufacturer, while it may be 90% or 80% aviation, it could also be that they have other side businesses, a side business that will also bring and create revenue at the airport. So, just a thought.
Mayor, if I could just address one thing, it, we could certainly, based on the discussion that you all have, have had tonight, can certainly add provisions to that second reading that require that, you know, should the aviation use ever cease to exist, you know, they don't, that the UAV portion of their business, you know, isn't in production, that their lease would, it's actually an agreement that we have with Elite Aviation, that our consent to their sublease to Iron Ridge, that that consent would be revoked. So we could add that, we could also ensure that the signage on the airport, I mean, on this hangar, you know, only focuses on the aviation portion. So there are some things that we could do to, and also even for percentage, if that's something that you all are interested in, so maybe we could bring some of those options to you, if you have other ideas or concerns. It's a very good question, it's a policy question that you guys do need to weigh in on, and so it's good input for us to know what potential options to put into a potential lease agreement.
Okay.
Thank you. So if I can jump in, I think one of the pieces in this conversation is, so ultimately, this was Iron Ridge's request, after council took action on the first vote. When you look at airports, airports can have a broad look in terms of what occurs on those properties, and so, and it often varies according to size and what they're trying to do. There are some that become very integrated into free trade zones. And so a major part of that is manufacturing, but it's the transportation of those goods in and out of the airport and how that interacts with the free trade zone. And so what we may need to have actually associated with this conversation is really that broader policy conversation in terms of what do, what do we want to see on the airport in terms of broader uses? Is it a, an industrial park? Because in a lot of cases, airports do act like industrial parks. So you have the aviation use as well as industrial type activities in terms of what they do. Others don't. And so you can tend to see that mix, and it's really more the policy conversation in terms of what we want to see. You know, what we're hearing is definitely manufacturing if it's associated with aviation-related issues. We're hearing some trepidation if it starts, or at least what I'm hearing is if it's not aviation-related. And I think those are some of the conversations that we need to have with the council.
Councilmember Moore? Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess the basic question for me is, why do they need to be at the airport? I mean, they, these are hand-launched drones, they don't take off or land from the airport, and their, all the manufacturing of firearms parts can be, I mean, basically, they can manufacture anywhere. So my question is, why do they need the airport? And the only thing I can come up with is because it's too cheap. They're gonna get that space too cheap. And I'm thinking that we'll be turning this, are taking our general industrial areas and shipping them to the airport because it's cheaper. And I don't want to get, go down that path either. Primarily, if they want to manufacture those drones at the airport, I am 100% behind that. But if they're gonna make firearms parts, I have serious trepidation about that.
Councilmember Robinson?
Actually, the comment that Councilmember Moore made is where I was going with my comment, that having increased industrial, commercial use, the airport was not meant to cannibalize the industrial uses, especially since if you do get a kind of clustering of certain types of manufacturing in a certain area of the city, that can, that can benefit the cluster of manufacturers, as opposed to when we start, you know, leaking people off one by one, somebody goes to the airport, somebody does something else, then someone else might want to go to the airport. And we really do want to preserve those industrial uses where they've been zoned for industrial uses too. And I think it would then cause undue competition at the airport for purely aviation uses just because of space constraints. And again, I'm concerned with also manufacturing, whether or not that access road to the airport is capable of carrying larger trucks that would be delivering raw materials. And time of day, the road's not very wide, people aren't used to a lot of activity on that road, and it would frankly be a surprise to the private airplane owners and leasers of the hangars to see all that happening.
Okay, we've got a motion to table, it's been seconded, let's vote on that. Okay, that passes seven to zero. If you want to do the consent agenda.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is consent agenda. The first one is item 9A, ordinance is 2014-26 and 27. Ordinance 2026 is a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the North Star Annexation, generally located north of Plateau Road and east of Mount Audubon Drive, and zoning the property R1 residential low density. Ordinance 2014-27 is a bill for an ordinance approving a land use amendment to the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan for the North Star Annexation, generally located north of Plateau Road and east of Mount Audubon Drive. Both of these ordinances are scheduled for a public hearing, a second reading on June 10th. Item 9B is ordinance 2014-28, bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of all rights of way and easements dedicated on the Providence final plat recorded in Boulder County at reception number 2957603, generally located south of State Highway 66 and east of Sundance Drive. Public hearing is second reading scheduled for June 10th. Item 9C is ordinance 2014-29, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of alley right-of-way in block 38 of the original town of Longmont, generally located north of Fifth Avenue, south of Sixth Avenue, east of Terry Street, and west of Coffin Street. Public hearing is second reading scheduled for June 10th. Item 9D is ordinance 2014-30, a bill for an ordinance authorizing an unmanned aerial system aircraft lease agreement between the City of Longmont LLC and Iron Ridge Engineering LLC as less or. Public hearing and second reading of this item is scheduled for June 10th, 2014. Item 9E is Resolution 2014-51, establishing the fee for cash in lieu of water rights transfers. Item 9F is adopt the City of Longmont's 2014-2015 Water Supply and Drought Management Plan. And item 9G is approved capital improvement program amendments, and staff does not have any items that they need pulled.
Councilmember Robinson?
I'd like to pull E for a question, please.
Councilmember Bagley?
Um, 9A is what the gentleman at public invited to be heard was talking about, right? I'd like to pull that.
Councilmember Moore? Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move the consent agenda minus A and E.
Okay, let's vote on that. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
And item 9A is the North Star Annexation, and Don Burchett is here to address questions.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Thank you, Mr. Burchett. I just, do you want, so it sounds like that the owners of lot two and lot three are concerned that we'll be eating into the front yards? So how much would we be eating in? Does the city already have an easement in place, or would it require some type of eminent domain action?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, members of the city council, Don Burchett with the Planning and Development Services.
The City of Longmont.
City of Longmont. The, the number of questions that you just asked, the first answer is the width of the proposed Mount Audubon. It's been estimated by Public Works that we will need a total of 57 feet of right-of-way to fit in a street that would meet our city standards. The Portico development to the west of their property, dedicated 30 feet with their plat that's dedicated to the City of Longmont. This property would, or this annexation would bring that into the city limits, and so we would need an additional 27 feet. On the plan that I have seen for the area, there's an existing 30-foot road in access easement on the properties of both of these parties. I do not know who the benefactor of the road in access easement is to. I don't believe it's to the city, I don't know whether it was just to the property owners. But there is an existing easement that allows for not only Mr. Ottenson and Mr. Cahalan to access their properties, but three additional properties to the north to access their properties as well.
So the easement isn't, so the easement that runs there is not owned by the city?
Not that I know of.
Okay, all right, I was just looking at the city attorney, I got the, I got the look of, I don't know, okay, good, we'll figure that out. So essentially, if we build the road as presented, are we going to be eating 27 feet into their neighborhood, or into their front yards?
So the way that it would work is that if we built Mount Audubon Street to 57 feet of right-of-way width, then it would require us to acquire the additional land from their lots in order to put that road through.
How would we do that?
So there's probably a number of different ways we could. Nick Wolfram's here tonight, he could probably explain it a lot better than I can. I've seen comments, I'm gonna let him cover that.
Good evening. Nick Wolfram again. A couple of things I want to clarify, is that this is, what's, that road is on our comp plan as a planning thing. We would not necessarily build it at this time, and this development could proceed without that road being built at this time, but it is on our comp plan. I think that there are a couple of ways that would happen. You would wait and see if there was ever any redevelopment of those two properties, that they ever annexed to the city, or there was ever any redevelopment, then it could at that time be worked in with them. If the city decided that it needed to go ahead with that roadway prior to that, then as we have with any other project of this nature, we would go in and negotiate to try and acquire whatever right-of-way was necessary for it. But to be clear, it's not something that would necessarily have to happen. We're preserving the right-of-way north and south of that, that is being annexed as part of this property, but, but not necessarily planning to build that road in conjunction with this initial phase of that development at this time.
All right, so all we're doing is saying we're approving the plan, but we're not necessarily giving city staff permission to start cutting up, cutting up their front yards?
We don't have anything in our CIP even unfunded.
Okay, and so.
For that project.
So essentially, what it is, is they're concerned, giving a heads up, but we're not doing anything at this point, is that, is that?
The only thing we're doing is saying that if we annex, we're following our comp plan, which shows a road right through there, and so the portions that we're annexing, we would be reserving for future road right-of-way.
Right, so you can change the comp plan and put a road in my living room, but that doesn't mean you own it.
Nope.
And you still have to deal with me.
Right.
So the owners still have control.
Sure.
Over their land.
They own that land and it's not in the city.
Okay.
And we, and once again, we do not have any projects planned in our CIP, funded or unfunded even, identify for that.
All right, thank you, that makes me feel more comfortable.
And the key piece is, we are not annexing their lots.
No. Okay. So we're basically just saying in the future, we want to build a road here, but.
And if we annex it.
And if we annex it, we'll have to figure something out. But in the meantime.
There are a host of actions that have to occur before that work would ever take place.
All right, cool, thank you.
Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand this clearly. So what will it actually look like?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, members of the city council, Don Burchett, with the Planning and Development Services.
The City of Longmont.
The City of Longmont. The, there were a number of questions that you just asked. The first answer is the width of the proposed Mount Audubon. It's been estimated by Public Works that we will need a total of 57 feet of right-of-way to fit in a street that would meet our city standards. The Portico development to the west of their property, dedicated 30 feet with their plat that's dedicated to the City of Longmont. This property would, or this annexation would bring that into the city limits, and so we would need an additional 27 feet. On the plan that I have seen for the area, there's an existing 30-foot road and access easement on the properties of both of these parties. I do not know who the benefactor of the road and access easement is to. I don't believe it's to the city. I don't know whether it was just to the property owners. But there is an existing easement that allows for not only Mr. Ottenson and Mr. Cahalan to access their properties, but three additional properties to the north to access their properties as well.
So the easement is, so the easement that runs there is not owned by the city?
Not that I know of.
Okay, all right. I was just looking at the city attorney. I got the, I got the look of, I don't know. Okay, good. We'll figure that out. So essentially, if we build the road as presented, are we going to be eating 27 feet into their neighborhood, into their front yards?
So the way that it would work is that if we built Mount Audubon Street to 57 feet of right-of-way width, then it would require us to acquire the additional land from their lots in order to put that road through.
How would we do that?
So there's probably a number of different ways we could. Nick Wolfram's here tonight. He could probably explain it a lot better than I can. I've seen him come, so I'm gonna let him cover that.
Nick Wolfram again. A couple of things I want to clarify is that this is, what's, that road is on our comp plan as a planning thing. We would not necessarily build it at this time, and this development could proceed without that road being built at this time. But it is on our comp plan. I think there are a couple of ways that would happen. You would wait and see if there was ever any redevelopment of those two properties, if they ever annexed to the city. Or there was ever any redevelopment, then it could at that time be worked in with them. If the city decided that it needed to go ahead with that roadway prior to that, then as we have with any other project of this nature, we would go in and negotiate to try and acquire whatever right-of-way was necessary for it. But to be clear, it's not something that would necessarily have to happen. We're preserving the right-of-way north and south of that, that is being annexed as part of this property, but not necessarily planning to build that road in conjunction with this initial phase of that development at this time.
All right, so all we're doing is saying we're approving the plan, but we're not necessarily giving city staff permission to start cutting up, cutting up their front yards.
We don't have anything in our CIP even unfunded.
Okay, and so.
For that project.
So essentially what it is, is they're concerned, giving a heads up, but we're not doing anything at this point. Is that, is that.
The only thing we're doing is saying that if we annex, we're following our comp plan, which shows a road right through there, and so the portions that we're annexing, we would be reserving for future road right-of-way.
Right, so you can change the comp plan and put a road in my living room, but that doesn't mean you own it.
Nope.
And you still have to deal with me.
Right.
So the owners still have control.
Sure.
Over their land.
They own that land, and it's not in the city.
Okay.
And we, and once again, we do not have any projects planned in our CIP, funded or unfunded even, identify for that.
All right, thank you. That makes me feel more comfortable.
And the key piece is we are not annexing their lots.
No. Okay. So we're basically just saying in the future, we want to build a road here, but.
And if we annex it.
And if we annex it, we'll have to figure something out. But in the meantime.
There are a host of actions that have to occur before that work would ever take place.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand this clearly. So what will it actually look like? The, I see the emergency access, but that's only for emergencies. So is there going to be some sort of gate there on the east side at the bottom of the little color zoom that we were given? Which is useful because, you know what? When I was trying to zoom on my laptop at home, it, all the letters got very fuzzy, and it wasn't my eyesight. So I'm just, so will it go from an improved blacktop to gravel? Will people be driving back and forth in front of their houses?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levison. In order for this property to develop the way that it's shown, the southern portion of Mount Audubon, which is next to, and south, actually, south of the Cahalan Lot Number 2, would have to be developed to some extent to provide the emergency access that would be required by the fire department. Now, that could be that we build out that section of the road to its full width, up to and stopping at the south property line of Lot 2, and then putting up signage that directs that it's a private drive from that point on. We could improve it from the standpoint of just meeting the minimums for the fire department, which is a 20-foot paved access road that would support the 84,000 pounds of a fire truck. So there's a number of different options that we could look at. You know, the intent is to not, to have people go up and use a private drive that's not public, but other than putting a gate up or putting somebody out there 24 hours a day to make sure nobody drives up there, I mean, we can't say that that wouldn't happen. And again, currently, there are other property owners to the north of these two lots that have the right to use that to get to their property.
And, but when I'm looking at the map, so if I lived on Lot 10 at the very bottom here, that third, that third lot in going east, I would go up Street, Street D Type S, north, and then go to where it says neck down, make a left-hand turn, go to the roundabout, and exit that way.
That is one way that you could go, yes.
And I could use this emergency path.
No.
Because it would be, it would only be for emergency use.
Correct, and I believe that what we put into the agreement was that we would have two sets of ballards or gates to make sure that only the fire department has access through that, so that we would not send residents, because that was a concern of Boulder County as well, in impacting the residents.
And then, so I guess I'm a little confused about when, at the roundabout on the north end, is it going to look, going south from the roundabout, basically, are we going to tell people at that roundabout that if you're headed towards a private drive? Are we just going to improve it so that there's no blacktop to encourage people to go south?
Public Works will make the final decision, but, and at this stage, at the concept plan, we haven't worked out all the details. But I think that, as Nick has explained, until the road is needed, it's probably in our best interest not to build something that then is not going to be used and could fall apart, and we would use the life, lose the amount of life that that road is intended for if it's built and sits there for many years before it's used. So more than likely, what would be, I think, a smart way to try to alert people that the road is someday going to go through would be to build the roundabout, build the south leg, at least through where that splitter island is, and then close, have some kind of signage at that point that the road is closed. It would not extend past the lot, I think that's Lot 2, that I see on the, on the plan there. And that way, we don't have a road that we have to maintain or worry about people dumping stuff on, things like that. And then we would collect the monies to put that in escrow to build that at a future date when it's needed.
I mean, I, I've been out, years ago, I've been out to this area when we had some continuing discussions around the traffic flow in this area of town, and it's not really, Mount Audubon was never really meant to take a heavy volume of traffic in its current condition. It's really kind of a, if you will, a country road.
It's a private drive that services about five lots, yes.
Yeah. All right, well, I'll send this on to second reading, and, but I do have, I do have concerns when we start, you know, drawing, you know, roadways across people's property, and I can understand why people are concerned, because, you know, there's a lot of houses there.
Sure.
That are going to be built.
The only thing that I would also point out that I think is important for council to remember is that we're also trying to make aware of the future residents that live here, that move into this area, that Mount Audubon's meant to be built in the future too. Similar to the discussion you had tonight with the Ninth and Hoover Project of where a road was stubbed, you know, that's a warning for people to know that there's something planned to happen in the future. And if they don't, you know, it's another way for us to make people aware, because people don't always come in and check comprehensive plans or call the planning department to ask, you know, what is going to happen behind my house? So if they find any of this stuff in their closing items and it shows this on that concept plan, that's another way of making people aware of it. So, you know, that's, that's why we show the detail that we do a lot of times on these.
And I also note in the annexation agreement that there is a notation that folks, when they purchase these properties, will be given that, you know, several-page slip paper saying, you acknowledge that you're in an airport influence zone. So I would just like to highlight for people that we really want the developer to like, point that out at closing, because my inbox is really full on the weekends, you know, 94 messages. And so it would be nice to give people the heads up that, you know, be maybe a little more straightforward with people before we build housing and then expect people to think they're getting quiet and they're not.
Okay, so you move. Okay. Councilmember Christensen.
It seems to me that there's, the issue at dispute is the NUPUD, which I, in my ignorance, I don't, I've never heard that term before. So that must be a legal kind of entity, and it has certain expectations of a certain set aside for open space, which Mr. Callahan says have already been violated, and it's in conflict with our Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan, in a way, in this, in this road. Do you understand what I'm saying? It seems like that's the dispute between this neighborhood development, which Mr. Callahan signed on to, and the, the plan for Audubon Road, which has been in the development for a while, I guess. So could you speak to that briefly, in three sentences?
Councilmember Christensen, Mayor Coombs, I don't know if I've ever answered anything in three sentences here, so I might be in trouble. Boulder County representatives are here in the audience and could probably answer your questions related to non-urban PUDs.
Hi, I'm Ryan Stewart, Boulder County Parks and Open Space Director, and also here this evening is Conrad Lattis from the county attorney's office, if I can't quite answer every question you might have. Non-urban PUDs are a form of subdivision that occurred in Boulder County starting in the late 70s and went through about the end of the century. And it stands for non-urban PUD. And the way they were originally envisioned, it was a way of getting extra bonus density lots, additional lots, in other words, on your land, if a certain percentage of the land were, was set aside in a conservation easement. The conservation easements, however, typically said, and this one did from day one, that that conservation easement could be terminated at any time that the Boulder County Commissioners and the Planning Commission of Boulder County determined that development of the land would be consistent with the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan. So in 1988, the, the property that's, that this is a part of was approved as a non-urban PUD, and from day one, the conservation easement said that at some point in the future it could be terminated if the county commissioners and county planning commission determined that that was appropriate. And actually, you have in Longmont already a couple subdivisions that occur on land that was at one point a conservation easement. Some of Somerset Meadows, for instance, it's being developed kind of in the same area, used to be a conservation easement under a non-urban PUD. Then in 1996, Boulder County, so eight years after the subdivision was approved, Boulder County and the City of Longmont adopted intergovernmental agreements where basically the county recognized Longmont's planning area, and the City of Longmont recognized the rural nature of the land that was outside Longmont's planning area. And one of those intergovernmental agreements even said that this parcel of land that we're talking about tonight, the 27 acres of a conservation easement, could be used as a transferable development rights receiving area. So in other words, because these areas are in Longmont's comprehensive planning area, were contemplated for development by Longmont, the county was saying that that sort of development was appropriate and could happen in the future. In the year 2007, then another 11 years after that, the Board of County Commissioners and the Boulder County Planning Commission approved these lands for development pursuant to certain conditions that were attached, like, and some of the conditions that the county was interested in was that they wanted to be sure that the lots on the outside of this development would fit in more with the rural character of land that was on the outside, right across the street from this. So as long as certain conditions were met, the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners said that the conservation easement could be terminated. So that's kind of, I mean, we could probably talk about this for a half an hour, because it is kind of a complicated matter, but the simple facts are that from day one, this was allowed. At a certain point, the city and Boulder County made agreements that made it possible for this happen, to happen. After those agreements were made, the Board of County Commissioners and the County Planning Commission said that the county's objectives were being met with this land being developed and the transferable development rights program being utilized, and said it was okay to do it. So, thank you.
All right, we've got a motion. It's been seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes.
Mayor, if I could just add one thing. You know, we've already voted, and Councilmember Christensen, so the city was certainly aware of Mr. Cahalan's concerns about the NUPD, PUD claim. I'm so glad Mr. Stewart explained the NUPD program. But the annexation ordinance agreement does address this issue, and the applicant has agreed to identify the city for any claims that may arise out of the annexation that we have violated NUPD rights. And so that's from the city's perspective. It was primarily a Boulder County program. If the property owner has any concerns, we think they would be mostly directed towards the county, but in case the city were named in a lawsuit, we have taken measures to protect the city through identification by the applicant.
Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, the next item is Resolution 2014, 51, establishing fee for cash and lieu of water rights, and I believe that Ken Houston is here to address questions.
Councilmember Levison.
Hello. Thanks for coming down, Ken. I am just a little bit confused when, I know we changed our policy about how to determine our raw water, I'm not our water, our cash and lieu of water rights transfer fee. I'm just a little bit confused because we had on consent, adopted our Water Supply and Drought Management Plan, which tells us water is becoming even more valuable and scarce, and yet we are decreasing, in response, and we are doing something that seems like not logical, whereas we're decreasing the cost of cash and lieu of water rights transfer. And I guess the question is, you know, why is that, number one? And number two, I did review the other documents where it shows that we do have these ups and downs, and I guess I'd like to, you to discuss the historical issue about, you know, why we increase or decrease. And then the third thing is, what other, are we, is there going to be some big deal coming through that somebody is going to pay us, you know, so much less for a cash and lieu of water right transfer? So I guess I have four questions lined up for you.
Great. Mayor, Councilmember.
He can handle it. He's handled it before.
Well, we'll try to cover, and actually, I think all of those questions may be in the kind of quick historical perspective on the cash and lieu fee will hopefully be answered. So the cash and lieu fee for, from its original inception, clear back in the 1960s, up until about the turn of the century, was based upon a number of different water rights categories, including projects and local basin water and CBT shares, those types of things. In the round 2003, we actually changed the methodology for calculating the cash and lieu fee to base it strictly on the price of Colorado Big Thompson Project allocation units. Those, most of the other water rights were kind of following the value of the CBT, excuse me, and, so, and it was an easily accessible data point, and so it worked well to make that conversion, and we actually followed the price of CBT for about the last, a little over a decade. Unfortunately, the, the market for Colorado Big Thompson Project units has absorbed the large bulk of available units, and so they're becoming more scarce, as with any supply and demand scenario, because the supply is very limited at this point. The price is, has just skyrocketed. In fact, it, it came to a point where it really didn't become logical to follow that CBT price as the single index for, for setting a cash and lieu fee. It really came about last August when we were looking at the cash and lieu price, and it was going to jump, I mean, just about 50% increase at, you know, at one shot. That didn't, that didn't make a lot of sense, and it didn't, wasn't really tracking, so that's why we did come back. I had a conversation with Water Board, and Water Board advised us to come back with the additional criteria that we had done. And now, the raw water requirement policy allows Water Board to look at a number of indices. Everything from one of our lower-cost indices, such as water conservation and local basin water rights, those are kind of the lowest, those are, you know, in that $5,000 to $8,000 an acre foot range. Also, we look at the projects that are in our raw water master plan, projects that we'll be moving forward with, that's in that about $10,000 an acre foot range. we'll be moving forward with, um, that's in that about $10,000 an acre foot range. Um, we-
Excuse me, does that mean Windy Gap money? Windy Gap Perm?
Windy Gap is one of those projects.
And that's about $10,000?
Um-
I remember that, no, I saw, I read something about that recently, though.
Yeah, so, so, the one way to have a windy gap, um, number comes in, it's about $3,500 an acre foot to get storage space, but it takes Longmont about two and a half acre feet of storage space to develop one acre foot of firm water. So if you, if you do that math, you're up in that about $9,000 an acre foot range, and, and just slightly below the 10, 10.8 that Water Board is recommending. So that, that's how that, that particular project would get you there. Um, uh, CBT, uh, even though we continue to track it, um, it, it's absolutely gone out, out of the, out of the market, it's, uh, it's pushing $20,000 a unit, which pushes you in the high $30,000 an acre foot range, you know, I just, to be honest, I don't see us getting any CBT units. Uh, it, it is primarily being driven by, you know, there are a lot of rural domestics and other smaller water providers, that's their sole source, they have no choice, and so they're, they're limited to, to the ability to only use CBT, so that's, that's really kind of what's happening in that. And so Water Board, um, you know, I, I do applaud them, they did spend about four or five meetings, uh, really looking hard at this, um, and looking at this criteria. Um, and so, uh, at the, at the last Water Board meeting when they, uh, developed this recommendation, that's where they really looked hard at the projects, um, and, and partially that's because, uh, they looked at the fact that the, the project costs that were in that $10,800 range, um, really, that's where the money, uh, that we would collect in cash and lieu, um, is going to go to, and so, a part of their logic was, if that's, if that's where we're putting that cash and lieu, we're really putting that cash and lieu money in water conservation and, uh, constructor projects, so that's where, why they felt that was what made sense.
Do you have any big projects that are cash and lieu coming up that we anticipate people coming and paying cash and lieu of water rights?
Um, generally, we don't have any in front of us right now that I would see a lot of cash and lieu. Um, there is still some native basin water out there, uh, such as Lake McIntosh and other water rights like that. Generally, um, those price in about 60 to 80% of cash and lieu. They, they trap our cash and lieu, so, the only way they can sell their water rights and want to sell it is, is to be less expensive, and so, so I still, as long as that water's available, I still expect to see that come in as non-historical water. Um, we, we have, um, not had a lot of cash and lieu over, you know, historically over the past 10 years, it's mostly been water, um, but this will have, we will get more cash and lieu in the future as some of those non-historical water rights start getting bought up and, and there isn't as many available. So, um, that's, that's one of our things that's really hard, you know, we don't tell the development community that they have to either get, you know, pay cash or get water, it's really their choice. Um, and it, and it really depends on if they're in a big hurry, it's really easy to come in and just write the check, they're done, and they're off, and they can, and they can start going. Um, but if, but if they plan ahead and they have enough time, then they're more than likely gonna go try to get some water on the market at a lower rate. Um, just to kind of put, um, the whole idea of, I, I have had other people ask me, well, it's going down, that sounds crazy. Um, just to kind of put that idea into perspective, actually, I, I look back, um, over the last 14 years since 2000, we've actually gone down 17 times and up seven. So, over the last 14 years, we've actually gone down more than we have up, which, which surprised me when I actually looked at it, but, uh, it, it's really primarily driven with the economy, you know, and we know we had some tough economic times, so that's primarily why some of that price went down, but, uh-
So when the water rights get scarcer, the price in cash and lieu goes up? So if all those water rights around McIntosh get bought up, then we're gonna reexamine our price and then look to adjustment again?
Well, yeah, I mean, uh, again, as those become more scarce, still, owners will feel like they can ask for more, and, and that will be, that is one of the criteria now that will be considered. Also, um, the cost, cost of projects never go down, and so that'll detract as well.
And are we pretty much in line with other cities in cash and lieu?
You know, we are, uh, we are slightly higher than some, um, uh, Fort Collins is, is lower than us, and, um, we're in the kind of the ballpark of Loveland, Loveland. Uh, there are, the, the small rural domestics that are limited to, to CBT only, um, they're obviously much higher than us. Um, there's, there's a lot of them, some of them, especially the rural domestics, they don't even allow cash and lieu, they, they just say, "You gotta go get CBT water and bring it in to me." And, and so then, that's one reason CBT's gone up so high, you know, developer has no choice, so.
So, not seeing anybody else on, I'll go ahead and, um, move, uh, Resolution 2014-51.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, let's start.
Thank you, Ken. I'd like to add, but, you know, sitting on the Water Board, um, I thought they did a really good job, too, they looked at all the data, I mean, water's kind of like stocks, you know, it goes up some of the times, it goes down, and I thought that they had a pretty good logical method all through to come up with this numbers, and-
Mayor Coombs, your first general business item is the 2014 mosquito update, and Kim Sugar will introduce this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, in July, after the citywide spraying for West Nile virus, um, um, council-directed staff to go back and evaluate the program and bring back recommendations of how to improve the program and also address, um, how to inform the public better of the program. So tonight, Dan Wolford and Rigolio are going to make that presentation.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm Dan Wolford, Land Program Manager for the City of Longmont, Public Works and Natural Resources Department. Uh, we have a little bit of a PowerPoint presentation for you to bring this up and go through, um, what we're gonna, let's see if I can get this to work here.
Hope it's not too scary.
So tonight's presentation, we're gonna quickly go over a brief history of West Nile virus to bring you up to speed and some of that, um, go over the, uh, Longmont mosquito survey that was in your packet, uh, go through some of the components, some of the things and recommendations that we're anticipating, um, in 2014, and then we'll have a brief summary and ask for direction. Um, as we go through this process tonight, we've got a number of other folks with us tonight, uh, representatives from Boulder County Public Health, um, to answer any questions you might have related to their operations or some of their recommendations, as well as representatives from, um, Colorado Mosquito Control, um, again, any operational questions for the city, or, um, what any of the other, uh, municipalities up and down the Front Ranger doing from a perspective of mosquito control. So, a little bit of history about West Nile virus, um, you know, it was initially isolated in 1937 in the West Nile subregion of Eastern Africa in Uganda. Um, the West Nile virus family, uh, primarily ticks and mosquitoes, and you can see there's a variety of other types of encephalitis that I'm certain you've probably seen, like the St. Louis encephalitis and some of these other ones that are, uh, as a result of, uh, those types of viruses. We really didn't see anything in the Western Hemisphere, uh, related to West Nile virus until 1999 and breakout in New York City, and then it quickly made its way across the United States, and we saw those numbers jump significantly in 2003, and then continued sweeping across the country. Just from your perspective, if you can see those numbers, you can see the number of human cases, um, in 2003 in Colorado, there were nearly 3,000 human cases. In 2012, we were down to, I believe, 131, and in 2013, we jumped back up to approximately 322 human cases. This kind of gives you an indication of West Nile virus from the CDC map, uh, and the numbers. Again, we were, if fortunate or not, depending on how you look at this, that we were second in the nation, as states, only slightly behind the state of California. What's important to see is, if you look at the, the, and I don't know if we can get to it, not with this anyhow, the three-county region between Laramo Weld and Boulder County, this is the data that indicates the numbers that were in, in 2003. If you look around the entire state, there's nothing that's close to those three counties number-wise for West Nile virus. I'm gonna go through, and hopefully you'll see that trend in 2006, the numbers, the only county was Delta County that even came close to the three-county region that we're involved with. Again, 2009, significant numbers, and then this was last year's numbers, pretty significant. We're moving into our 12th year of mosquito control, uh, for, for the city, and you'll see that over that time, it's only once in that, uh, 11-year period that Delta County had numbers greater. What I want to impress on you is the fact that no matter what's going on, West Nile virus will be here, and this three-county region is pretty significant in the production of West Nile virus. As Kim had mentioned, one of the things we are moving into was, you know, trying to evaluate the program, and since we're moving into our 13th year, each year we tend to tweak things a little bit, one way or another, this was no different, um, as we sat down with Colorado Mosquito Control and Boulder County Public Health, the leadership team, and looked at some, uh, things that we really needed to look at to make our program better. One of the things we felt was very important was to do a citywide, um, mosquito survey, uh, and get a sense of the general public's thoughts of our mosquito control program. Again, we, there were, um, 39, or 36% response rate, it started with a, 800 random samples mailed across the three wards, and again, according to the company, 95% confidence level. So, the very first question that, you know, we tossed out there, and you'll see that we have almost 91% of the, the residents that responded, that they were very concerned about West Nile virus, and then again, mosquito control in general was just a tad lower, but pretty significant in those numbers. As we move through the mosquito control efforts, you'll see that we have pretty significant support from our community for every single level of, uh, mosquito activity that we're dealing with, whether it's, you know, um, the use of larva siding, spot spraying, and even citywide spraying. But you will notice that as we move through those tiers, that we still have, um, 60% support for the citywide spraying. However, what I wanted to point out to you was, there's a significant jump then, too, from that category. As you see the spot spraying, it was, you know, a concern from 21%, it almost doubles from that perspective when we jump into the citywide spraying. The other aspect that we wanted to make certain was, you know, we wanted to hear from the general public of how did they want their information, how were we gonna reach them, public notification? You'll see that the eAlert system and then local newspaper certainly topped the list of how they're getting their information about mosquito control, and probably a wide variety of other activities throughout the city, followed by the websites and, um, the use of social media. The other thing that we had some concerns with last year, being a very unique year, trying to time our, our applications, was the notification process, and, you know, what is it that we really want, and give, um, especially when we're doing the enhanced spraying that we did last year, or citywide spraying, what type of notification? So you'll see that, um, we pretty much targeted that 48-hour, and I think as you'll see through the presentation, that's gonna continue to be one of our recommendations. The components of our mosquito control program really focus on, on public education being the, the most important and the biggest component, followed by site monitoring and surveillance. We've already, you know, been doing our, our surveillance and monitoring for a month already, um, and larva siding along that, followed by our adulticide, spot spraying, and then a citywide spraying. The information up here shows you what our costs were in 2013, um, that bottom line in 2013 for the emergency spraying breaks out the citywide spraying at, at $40,000 versus the enhanced spraying, which is about a quarter of that. We anticipate that in 2014, um, the cost for the routine program's gonna jump up because we added a number of trap sites throughout the city. In 2013, we had 11 sites, now we have 16 sites that we're gonna be monitoring every single Sunday, starting June 1st. The spot spraying, um, with the two asterisks, is just an indication of what our estimate is over the past, that's an average over the past five years, as you see last year, we spent nearly $15,000, and hard to say if we'll get to the point where we need to do any level of emergency spraying in 2014. Rigolio and I have been working together since 2013, so I'm gonna turn the public information in that component over to Rigolio, I'll take a breather here and let him share with you how we're trying to get this information out to the public.
Thanks, Dan. Good evening, Council, my name is Rigolio, I'm the city's public information officer, and as Dan, Dan mentioned, I'm just gonna briefly, um, remind you of all the variety of ways that we communicate with the public. What I have up on the screen right now is the 4D Prevention Program, that's a big part of the West Nile Information Program. So, the information we try to give out to people really stresses the prevention aspect of this particular issue. So, just to remind you in public again of the four Ds, uh, the first D is using DEET or an alternative mosquito repellent, uh, the second D to dress in long sleeves and pants, the third D to avoid dusk until dawn, when the mosquitoes are most prevalent, and then fourth D in this particular program was to drain standing water. So, uh, we try to stress upon the public these four Ds, and that's the primary, uh, message that we try to deliver every year. There are a variety of methods we use to communicate with the public, and, um, we know that no, no one particular communication channel is, is the silver bullet for getting messages to people, and if you look more closely at the survey, you'll see that that is also the case, the survey just backs up the, the fact that we need to communicate in all avenues. So, you know, we communicate most messages, and in particular, this particular, uh, West Nile message in three components, uh, the print component, the electronic component, and the face-to-face component. So the first slide here shows what we do in terms of print, so hopefully you're familiar with, with most, if not all of these channels of communication that the city uses. So obviously, our first big print, um, item is City Line. Our surveys, citizens' satisfaction, citizen satisfaction surveys have always indicated for several years that City Line is the most read, um, piece of information from the city for information about the city. So, City Line is always number one in our, uh, attempts to inform the public. So, monthly newsletter, I think you all know, mailed in the, um, utility bill every month. City Talk is our weekly ad in the Times Call, uh, we put information there as well about West Nile, uh, whether it's about the four Ds, or whether it's about some upcoming spraying or adulticide, we just try to remind the public about what's going on, uh, on a weekly basis in that particular, um, City Talk ad. Employee Connection, obviously, is the city newsletter for employees. Uh, Colorado Mosquito Control also buys ads in the Times Call, they have a weekly ad notifying the public of those localized spraying areas around the city, so they do do that every week, uh, on a regular basis. Again, to continue with the print items, we have, uh, brochures that are placed in the Civic Center Mall area, we also take those brochures with us to a variety of events throughout the city, again, just another print media to, medium to, uh, help inform the public. The Fight the Bite campaign has been going on for several years as well, sponsored by the state of Colorado and Boulder County, and, um, I have, uh, you, actually, that was the, uh, the first, um, graphic that I have here to show you that, that is the Fight the Bite logo, and very familiar to people, so when they see that, um, piece of artwork, they know what that refers to. Again, continuing with, um, the print side of this, the rec brochure that's mailed quarterly to all Longmont residents also reminds people about, uh, West Nile as well. And then, we go to the video side of, uh, our notification program, we have, uh, a YouTube video that Dan recorded last year that basically outlines, again, the four Ds, what we do as a city to combat West Nile, so that's out, available on YouTube. We also play that video on Channel 8 throughout the summer, uh, Channel 16 on the electronic bulletin board, that is the- the four Ds, what we do as a city to combat West Nile. So that's out available on YouTube. We also play that video on Channel 8 throughout the summer, Channel 16 on the electronic bulletin board that is available to Comcast customers. We also use that as a medium to alert people about West Nile. And then, of course, the city website, we have a whole page devoted to this issue, and the Dan's videos posted there as well. We post all the results from all the trap sites every week as well, so people can really dig down deep if they want to get a lot of information about West Nile and traps and mosquitoes and that sort of thing. On the internet, again, another reminder is we have a West Nile page. There's the URL. We have a press release page. We use that quite frequently as well to update the news media as well as the public. Again, the video, Colorado Mosquito Control has their own website as well with a ton of information there. And again, the Channel 8 helps us with not only bulletin board messaging, but video messaging as well. Social media is a big deal, for sure. We certainly learned that during the flood. People have turned to social media in droves, so that's going to be another big component of our education program. So Facebook, Twitter, obviously. And then the third component that you see up there is our e-news component, so people subscribe to that particular item, so they can get on the website and they can put a check mark to say, "I want to proactively get information about West Nile virus." So what happens is we compose an email, we send it out whenever there's a message to share, and again, that goes to people's email, so they get the message directly. They don't have to rely on any other sort of media. Again, the notification system, as we continue on, that's the alert system I just described. Also, people can subscribe via the website at Colorado Mosquito Control to put their name and address in as part of a shut-off program, so when we do localized spraying, individual residents can call Colorado Mosquito Control or fill out the form and say, "Hey, can you just get my house or my area when you come around and spray?" Again, to continue with the outreach, this is more of the face-to-face kind of thing, so many of you have helped us out at Rhythm on the River and at Festival on Main. You are out there giving out mosquito repellent in the little packets, and you're giving brochures and sharing information with the public about the risk of West Nile, so we appreciate your help in that regard. And then, just a quick little list of some of the other events that we have during the summer, where we actually fill a box full of mosquito repellent, put a big Fight the Bite sign in front of it, have it at a booth, or we even have staff sometimes just walk around, say at a concert where people are just sitting on the lawn, we'll hand out mosquito repellent, and we'll just remind people to be safe. So that's our face-to-face program. We also own a radio station. That's something new that happened just within the last month or so. So the emergency management office is running a radio station, 1670 on the AM. Right now, it's broadcasting flood information alerts, so we, on a daily basis, provide river levels and other messages about the runoff. But we also can use it as a system to update people about West Nile virus, and that's what we'll do as well. And then, to try and hit our Spanish language population, we use La Le Radio, which is at 11:70 a.m., to deliver messages about West Nile in Spanish. And that's it for me. I'll turn it back over to Dan unless there are any questions about our public education component.
Councilman Anderson.
Have you added a component when you're looking at the Times Call? When you buy a print ad, do you get a certain number of pop-ups to or scrolls on the top when people look on the, like, maybe looking for an article or something or an ad they can click on?
Yeah, that's part of kind of the general package that the Times Call offers to anyone anymore. I think, I don't think you can even buy an ad anymore without some kind of electronic component to it, so that's almost an automatic as far as the Times Call goes. So yes, we can add that or ask for that component as well.
And can, do we do anything with Yahoo or Google Ads? Like, can you do that? I don't know whether or not you can specifically target anybody who's done a search for City of Longmont, for example.
There are ways of boosting your posts.
Or do we call Tinker Mill and ask them to do that for us?
Yeah, exactly. There's a way to boost our posts, you know, it works much like an ad. You'd pay extra to have the post boosted, is the term that they use, and targeted to certain audiences. Yes, that's possible.
Like even having an annoying mosquito just floating around on the city's cover page, and someone has to swat it?
Yeah.
And when they swat it, they get their mosquito update?
Yeah, and actually Sandy Cedar has volunteered to wear a mosquito suit and stand on the corner with a sign, so.
That's great.
I forgot to mention that particular component of the outreach, so look for her this summer.
Okay. And the giant mosquito, well, no, she'll be in the catching, and somebody will have to be, she'll be swatting who's going to be the mosquito. Is that going to be you?
That's right. I'm going to be behind her with a big net, I think.
Okay. Now, I'm just wondering whether or not we can't be doing things that would really attract people, that it looks like they have to interact with us first in order to get the information, and a lot of what we heard as complaints with people coming forward last year when we had to do that blanket spraying were, they don't subscribe to any of these ways that they have to contact us for us to push the information to them. But I'm wondering whether or not we can still get them. And I don't know, have we contacted any of those folks who came to the podium last year?
I have not, no, I have not contacted any of them. I think we wanted to do this update first. Another component along those same lines is we'll be switching over to a new website, probably mid-June. So, we haven't figured out all the bugs, pardon the pun, in terms of the e-notification piece, so there may be a reason for us to physically contact these people on the subscription list to say, "Hey, you know, the subscription notice is changing a little bit," so we're going to send emails to probably, I think there's 300 people on that list right now. We'll probably proactively say to them, "Hey, you'll probably want to revisit our website again. Re-sign up. Make sure that you're getting the message that you want." So, you know, so there will be contact in that regard, for sure.
All right, thanks.
I guess I have a question more for Dan. You know, since we can't draw a mosquito net around our city, yeah, maybe we can do it with drawings. You know, I guess, well, before the flood, you know, I was up in an airplane, I was just shocked at how much water there is, that even on private land and getting access to do larvicide out there, I mean, and then if Weld County's not doing their share, you know, it kind of, because, I mean, how far do mosquitoes travel? I mean, they don't just stay in one location, do they? Do they fly a couple of miles with the wind, or?
Mayor Combs, actually, I was preparing, you know, for questions like this, and, you know, again, depends on the species, and some of those will migrate as far as 100 miles, but typically what we see is anywhere between 1 to 3 miles. They'll migrate, you know, for harbors throughout the season.
So to continue on, again, as you can see, we've worked really hard with trying to get this word out in speaking tonight with Boulder County Public Health as well as Colorado Mosquito Control. They're more than willing to help us in any way possible in any of these special events or, you know, providing information on their websites for this information. This little map just gives you an indication of the over 2,000 larvae sites that get inspected on a very regular basis, and of those, 944 were treated in last year's program. One of the important aspects of this and what we're talking about is to, and recommendations from you, is to move our monitoring and surveillance cycle from a seven-day cycle back to a five-day cycle. Back in 2009, Council gave us a direction to move to a five-day cycle, and last year, sure enough, lo and behold, we decided to save $2 that we went back to that seven-day cycle. We think that by moving to that five-day cycle, that transition would take place at the time that West Nile positive mosquitoes are found in the three-county regions, very similar to our spot spraying. And obviously, by increasing our larvicide, we will eventually decrease our adulticide spraying, and very typically during the peak period of, you know, June through August, we do see some of those species that can, from an egg to an adult, within a weeks' period of time. So with that, and certainly Boulder County Public Health has recommended that, the additional cost associated with that bump is only $4,000. This is where a little bit of a shift for us is going to be, is we're now trying to place the, what we heard last year was, you know, in places like Roosevelt Park or some of those places core to the town that, you know, we didn't have a lot of mosquito information. Many of our traps are really based along the water resources like Jim Ham Park, Union Reservoir, the same range. So we've increased the number of trap sites to 16 this year, and again, that program, as we will show you here, the spot spraying occurs only when West Nile positive mosquitoes have been identified in the three-county regions. So we really are a vector program and not necessarily a nuisance program. The Council, again, was indicating jump to 16, and at the time that any of those traps hit that magic number of 100 adult mosquitoes, then we typically will move into that spot spraying component. We typically trap every single Sunday evening. I get that information most of the time by midday, late day. On Monday, what those numbers are, we get that out in the Times Call, and they're doing the adulticide and that spot spraying on Wednesday evenings. We will be running our first trap line, if you will, June 1st, so in two weeks. So with that, staff is recommending to continue to do the 24-hour notification for that. We certainly want to continue the notifications in the Times Call. We'll really bump up the e-alerts and go through the social networks, as we found out, and the recommendations in the survey. The other thing we thought would be interesting too is to, on a weekly basis, as we get those trap numbers, be posting that vector index, very much like you would see the fire index, you know, so that the general public can click on the city's website and see where that index is and follow where we're at through that process. We felt that was a very important means of getting that information out. This is just an indication of where we will be doing those spot sprays and what those areas are, and again, that's all based on the surveillance and the trap counts on those Sunday evenings. The enhanced spraying area, this is a component that we believe would be, might be beneficial to add into our existing emergency spraying regime. Kind of fits in between the spot spraying and the citywide spraying. Last year was the first year that we had attempted this, and the cost was about a quarter of what a citywide spraying was. And again, that bottom bullet was pretty important, is that we saw a relative same drop in the vector index from the citywide spraying as well as from the enhanced spraying. I believe the, after the citywide spraying dropped, the vector index dropped to a .2. After the enhanced spraying, it dropped to a .4. So with that, we want to implement that enhanced spraying, which would require, again, a written recommendation from Boulder County Public Health, again, based on that vector index. The program would target those high-production geographic areas supported by the surveillance, and we would continue throughout that process monitoring that vector index. Should the vector index not drop significantly, we would anticipate further direction from Boulder County Public Health as well as CDC for either maybe an additional enhanced spraying or moving to that next level of the citywide spraying. So our, again, staff recommendation to the Council would be adding this additional step to our regime. We've indicated that during the enhanced component, we would provide 48 hours' notice, and during that time, the city and Colorado Mosquito Control would honor shut-offs through the neighborhoods during that period of time. This map indicates the areas that would be incorporated in the enhanced spraying. One of the things we did find out from last year was, we've changed these now to like a grid number, Southwest 3. Last year, we had like park names on them, and a lot of people were confused because they don't associate their particular subdivision with a park name. So what we thought we would do is, you know, put the grid numbers with the numbers, provide that to the general public, so they could see exactly where they're at and provide, again, some mapping on the websites to better provide that information. Now then, as we jump into the largest tier, you know, the more important one, is the emergency spraying. In the 11 years that we've done the program, as I said, we're moving into year 12, we did citywide spraying in 2003, 2006, 2007, and 2013 with an average cost of nearly $40,000. Okay? Again, in order to implement this program, we would require a written recommendation from Boulder County Health to the city manager, which would be supported by the Colorado State Department of Health and Environment as well as CDC. Again, that vector index is an important aspect that provides that support. The elements of the program would only be implemented after the enhanced spraying failed, and we didn't see a significant drop in that vector index, and the spraying event would typically take place over five consecutive days. The way that works is they would spray the west side one night, they'd spray the east side, take a day off, go back and do the west side, and again, really with the intention is to knock down any adult mosquito that we might have missed the first time, and as they pupate and grow into the adults, we're getting them that second time around. So staff's recommendation for that is to continue the same protocol that we've done in past years, continue with the 48-hour notification, again, as identified through the survey you see there. And the one thing that we said, if this is really an emergency because of the vector index, we will not, it's not our intention to honor those spray-offs when we do a citywide spraying. So again, that just kind of gives you the indication with the enhanced areas that we would typically do that, the blue, then the yellow, wait a day, go back and do the blue and the yellow for a complete process. In your packet, I think you saw a number of options. Historically speaking, the city's routine mosquito control program is funded through the utilization of the general fund. Spot spraying, we kind of reconcile at the end of the year. It's all based on the number of miles of what we've done, and I think I shared with you that we anticipate that average year is about $8,800. And then the emergency citywide spraying is typically and historically been funded by the Council contingency funds. So we provided you some options in your packet, but again, staff's recommendation would be to fund the program with supplemental appropriation from the general fund after the emergency spraying has occurred as a result of direction from the city manager, which, again, is supported by Boulder County Public Health, CDC, and the state. This last chart that I want to share with you, if you see the bar chart, is actually the number of human cases across the state of Colorado for last year. The stars are when we did our applications, and you'll see that we did those roughly two weeks before they peaked, which is what we want to follow. So very typically, you will see those human cases come about two weeks after they've been infected by the West Nile virus. So we want to be making certain that we're taking our actions based on the vector index and not waiting to the point where we're waiting to see individuals infected with West Nile virus. It's unfortunate that our neighbors to the north have been managing it that way, and as a result, if you'll see, and if you check the numbers in Larimer County, I believe they almost doubled the number of human cases that occurred in Boulder County and Weld County. All right, so let's get, you know, again, to wrap up, what I would like to do is just, again, provide staff's recommendation and looking for that final direction from you with the larvicide, we would love to shift back to that five-day cycle. On the spot spraying, continue the 24-hour notice, provide all the publications and notification to the public, and again, recommend posting that vector index on the city's website. The enhanced spraying component, add that additional tier into our regime, provide 48-hour notice, and then, again, honor shut-offs during that time. The last element really is the emergency spraying, maintain the same protocol that we've done, that 48-hour notice, and again, not honoring that shut-off. And then the funding, going through that process of the appropriate appropriation, the additional appropriations for that process. With that, that ends my presentation. Like I said, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. We'd love to see the recommendation and direction from Council in those areas. If you have further questions, like I said, Colorado Mosquito Control is here and Boulder County Public to answer any questions you might have.
Well, I thought you did an excellent job in presenting, and so did Rigobert. I think everybody did a great job in pulling all this information together. I think we're going to get out in front of this a little bit better. I'm not that we haven't done a good job in previous years, but, you know, I feel strongly that we should follow all of your recommendations above that you made. I think they all made sense, so. Councilmember Lovison.
A couple of alterations I would suggest, though, is that to keep some consistency, I would suggest we do at least the minimum of 48 hours. According to what people responded, they wanted 48 to 72 hours. And so even with the spot spraying, I think that when people look at the notice, I think to be consistent is great, and so I would recommend on all of it having a minimum of 48 hours, even the spot spraying. It gives people a chance to do whatever they want to do. And then when we're doing the blanket spraying across the entire city, if we know there are people with the shut off, we should give them 72-hour notice. I think that that's only fair from what we heard people coming to the podium, if they wanted to choose to get out of town, if they don't pay attention for a day, or they're coming back from vacation or whatever, they may not have a chance to make those alternative arrangements. And people that are very sensitive, we heard a lot at the podium last year. So my recommendation is that for, you know, even the lowest level of spraying, to do the 48 hours, and then try to give people on the blanket spraying, especially the ones that, I guess, to focus on people that have the shut offs, give them an extra 24-hour notice to do 72 hours for those individuals, to kind of honor their request to be able to choose to leave. Otherwise, I think everything else is great.
Councilmember Christiansen.
I'm not one of those people who, I think you guys do a great job. I think we go does a wonderful job of covering all the avenues, and I think you guys do a great job of spraying. I think the complaints I hear most are people who seem to, they don't know what you're spraying, so they think it's gonna, they get riled up about their dogs and their kids and their vegetables, and they feel like, they just, they would like to know whether this dissipates in a while, or what the effect is going to be on their dogs and their children and their vegetables. And so maybe you could put forth some information about whether washing your vegetables is going to do any good, or filming your dog in a plastic bag will do any good, or something like that. Thanks.
I can speak to that. After they fogged my neighborhood, the next morning, I went out and picked fresh kale and fresh strawberries, rinsed them off real well, ate them, I think that at noon, and yeah.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Just to follow on, let's, Councilmember Christiansen's comments, what is being sprayed?
Mayor Combs, Councilman Moore, the product that's being sprayed is Aquiler 2020. The primary element or component of that is permethrin. And I think there's a lot of confusion about permethrin in general. Basically, the rate of application for the ultra-low volume misting component is .007 pounds per acre. When you look at what permethrin is used from an agricultural perspective, I think if you take avocados, tomatoes, something like that, the application rate there is two pounds per acre. So I think there's a big distance, you know, about that. But again, we try to put that information out on our city's website. I know Colorado mosquito control has some information on that. If you Google permethrin, there's just a wide variety of things. I brought a couple articles here today about the safety of permethrin, how it's rated through the EPA, and again, we can do our best to get that information, make that available, along with things like, you know, when we know it's coming, to shut your doors and windows, turn off your air conditioner, bring your pets inside if that's a concern. As Mayor Combs said, the recommendation, in the label itself, it clearly indicates that fruits and vegetables, it can be applied, you know, directly on those for the sake of control from mites and mosquitoes. So again, it's being able to get that information to the general public. Throughout the season, I get a wide variety of phone calls from those that have concerns saying, you know, when are you going to spray versus, you know, so it's both sides. But again, that's all information that's good, and we work to get that out to the general public.
So are there any non-target insects that are affected by this spray?
According to the label for Aquiler 2020, there, obviously bees is a big component, and it's very harmful to bees. The target spraying for when we do mosquito control is in the evening hours, typically when bees are in their hives. So, you know, we try to avoid the bee component by, again, targeting mosquitoes during their highest level of activity, which are the evening hours.
So it's contact activated?
Absolutely, yes.
And there's no residuals like on any forage plants that bees might use at 5:00 in the morning?
There is slight residual, but again, I believe the half-life on that, first of all, it's a water soluble, and it breaks down very rapidly in sunlight.
But there hasn't been any sunlight at 5:00 in the morning when the bees are out? So I definitely would support the five-day cycle. I think anything we can do with larvicide to reduce the impact of spraying is, the approach is preferred. I do get calls about, when are they going to spray my neighborhood so that I can go away? People are, maybe they don't, maybe are ultra-sensitive to the whole process, but basically they're saying that you're putting stuff on my property that I didn't authorize. And I don't know how you can actually deal with that, because I don't use any pesticides on my tomato plants, and you drive right down very greenway spraying away, and I didn't authorize that. So, you know, I'm sure it's going to get there, and, but I don't like mosquitoes either, so. Thanks, Dan.
Councilmember Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I share a lot of the sentiment that I've heard from my fellow council members. I just, what do you need from us? A motion, just a?
Just a direction.
I move that we thank or accept and thank staff for the work they've done and instruct them to follow through on their recommendations, with the change being that we give a minimum of 48 hours' notice whenever possible.
Okay, we got a motion, it's in second. I think the optimum word there was "whenever possible." Thank you.
Mayor Combs, your next standing is the Longmont General Improvement District Number One, and as soon as you recess and reconvene, I will read the resolution.
Councilmember Lovison.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we recess at the Longmont City Council and convene as the General Improvement District Number One.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, Kansas.
Hey, this first item is Resolution LGID 2014-02, which is a resolution of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One enacting a supplemental budget and making an additional appropriation for the expenses and liabilities of the district for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2014, and there is no formal staff presentation on this item.
Okay, any, all right, I'll, yeah. I'll go ahead and move R.L.R.U. 20 dash, oh, excuse me, first one, yeah. Yeah, 11-2. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Was that for R.L.E.G.I.D. 2014-02?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, let's vote. I was, passed 7 to 0.
The next item for the LURA board, I mean, no, sorry, for the General Improvement District Number One Board is the General Improvement District Irreconcilable Permit for a Use of a Portion of a 300 East Parking Lot. There also is no staff presentation on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. After reading through this, the only concern I have is having a wooden fence in a grease pit and the flammability associated with that. So I know that there probably are composite materials that would be, are available on the market now that could be substituted for the wood product. I would highly encourage that that be used instead of wood. It would be less flammable.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Combs, members of council, Nick Wolfram, again. Actually, this, and I can't tell you whether they did use a composite, it's an interesting, this was constructed about a year and a half ago, when we originally came to council and did this for the, what was in the Wing High. And since then, the ownership of that business has transferred, and so this is simply transferring that existing structure, which is already there, and that permit to the new business owner. So it is already constructed at this point in time. It was constructed by them, and they are responsible for the maintenance of it.
So that's basically a grease pit that's buried in?
No. It is a, it is a tank that is out there, and this is just a enclosure around that. It's not included in the area that has the remainder of the other trash and recycling closures in. So it was installed previously and approved by council originally in January 2013. So it's been out there for a year or more.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve the irreconcilable permit as submitted.
All right. Let's vote. I guess it's technically chairperson.
Not chairperson.
Yes. That passed a 7 to 0. Councilmember, or chairman, or board member, Santos.
Thank you, I don't want that promotion. Yet. Thank you. I move, as we adjourn as the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One, and can I do? And reconvene as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority, and convene as Longmont Urban Renewal Authority.
Let's vote.
I get four votes for that.
Okay, that passed 7 to 0.
So the first item of business, or the item of business as a LURA is Resolution LURA 2014-05, enacting a supplemental budget and making an additional appropriation for the expenses and liabilities of the authority for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2014. There's no staff presentation.
Okay. Board member Santos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If no one, none of the other commissioners have questions, then I move R.LURA 2014-05.
Okay, let's vote. That passed a 7 to 0.
Mr. Chairman.
Board member Santos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we adjourn as Longmont Urban Renewal Authority and reconvene as the Longmont City Council.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passed 7 to 0. Okay, now it's time for final call. Public invited to be heard, is there anybody from public that'd like to speak at this time? Okay, I'll close, trying to call, public invited to be heard. Now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I'd like to announce my business of the week, and it's one that I've done before, but I would like to recognize the Longmont United Hospital. It's so nice that we have a community hospital. About 15 years ago, my son, my youngest son, was diagnosed with bacterial meningitis. Had he not been seen immediately, he would have died. So I'm very grateful that we have Longmont United Hospital in our city.
Councilmember Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. My apologies again to city staff for snapping at you during the executive session. I love you all, you do great work. Big hug. I guess the only question I have is, was brought up, that Prospect Neighborhood Swimming Pool wasn't going to be allowed to open this year. Is that accurate, not accurate?
Mayor, members of council, I just sent you an email that described in detail the, exactly the chronology, adding some detail to what the information that was presented tonight. Essentially, in 2008, there was a certificate of completion that was issued to the Prospect Swimming Pool. That was a conditional temporary certificate that required the owner of the pool, Mr. Wallace, to construct permanent restrooms. Those restroom facilities were not constructed and are still not in place today. We were notified of this as the presenter during Public Invited to be Heard mentioned. We notified that they were not in compliance by Tony Beck, who is a resident. And so we followed that, we confirmed that was correct, and scheduled meetings with the HOA, with the HOA representative, with Karen Banker, resident of Prospect, with Mr. Wallace, and a representative that Mr. Wallace brought to the meeting. We explained that we, staff could not grant that variance, but the Master Board of Appeals could. And so at this point, it's going through the Master Board of Appeals process.
Okay, cool. So we can address it later, because I grew up with a swim pool, and just because somebody didn't do it, you know, would stink to take away the pool for the summer, so we'll deal with it later.
Councilmember Lovison.
Yes, I would like to just tell council members about a great experience I had at Indian Peaks Elementary. The Colorado Municipal League did a very small pilot drawing contest as part of their Lessons in Local Government Initiative with fourth graders in Indian Peaks in Longmont and Marble Elementary School in Marble, Colorado. And there were four winners from Indian Peaks, and I forgot to bring them to high, but I will give them to Sandy and see if we can have them available. They, the two fourth grade classes, the students knew so much about municipal government that I was really surprised, and I don't know why I would be, but they knew that of stuff that we did during the flood, they knew about parks, they knew about streets and being safe and smart and clean and all that, and it was really gratifying to see how well they had taken up those lessons. And Sandy has some pictures of the kids and their drawing, so that was really a lot of fun. And I want to thank Colorado Municipal League for choosing one of the Longmont schools to be part of the pilot project.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Well, to get back to the Prospect Pool, I'm just curious why the Master Board of Appeals would let it go for another month when they usually open on May, you know, they usually open on Memorial Day, and it seems like a shame to have to just sort of let it hang in the air for another month.
Mayor, Councilmember Christiansen, that's a great idea, a great point. When we met with the individuals from Prospect, I actually directed staff to go ahead and schedule a special meeting of the Master Board of Appeals, and so this additional detail is also in the email that I just sent. But we scheduled that meeting, special for the Prospect Pool. When we received the application, the variance application from Mr. Wallace, we immediately realized that if the board voted to uphold the building official's code interpretation, which is all that he was challenging, he felt like Mr. Allison, the building official's code interpretation was incorrect, that if they upheld that decision, they would have no way to subsequently provide a variance. So we called the applicant, Mr. Wallace's representative, encouraged him to please submit an additional, check an additional box, and explain that if that was denied, that we, that he needed to apply for a hardship variance to allow him to put the temporary restrooms that they've had for the last several years. that they've had for the last several years. The applicant declined to do that and at the board meeting, unfortunately, the board did uphold the, in their discussion, they said, well, we certainly support the building official's interpretation, that we agree with the way he's interpreting this. Unfortunately, they had no way to rule on the issue of a hardship variance for the temporary restroom facilities. So what happened was we simply just scheduled it for the next meeting. We have received the application this week from Mr. Wallace asking for the hardship variance. So we have scheduled that for the next available meeting, which is on June 4th. So unfortunately, it's not next week, but it's early part of the following week. So they will not be open, unfortunately, at the end of May, but they should be able to open. By all indications that the master board gave staff, they are willing to grant that hardship variance, but they can't do that until June 4th.
So the issue was because the box was not checked, it wasn't posted appropriately for the master board to take the action they needed to. So then it had to go to another hearing so it could be posted appropriately.
And we did notify, I did notify the interested parties that that had happened immediately. It was the next morning after that board met at night, I emailed the relevant parties that had provided us with their email addresses from Prospect to let them know that. So we have been trying to communicate extensively throughout the process.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Just a little bit of follow-up from our US 36th meeting, Solus's meeting this morning. There has been a Tiger grant applied for, for doing the design for 119 and 287 BRT lanes. So that, there is a process underway. If, if one of those are approved, they'll be start the planning process on that. So we're one more step closer, but we're still probably a couple of years out.
Okay, well, last Friday, I got to go on a tour of the Imagine Smart Home that Leona Stacker, former mayor, invited me. It was a wonderful tour, it was about an hour long, got to meet the, some of the guests and see some of the technology. It was pretty neat, so I'd highly recommend at some point when any of the council members get a chance to, to go out there to tour that. I'd also like to personally thank Sean Lewis for organizing the two city teams that ran in the Colfax Marathon. We all got, had a good time and had to get up awful early to get down there to start a race at 6:00 in the morning. It was way fun, so thank you, Sean, for putting that together. So, yeah, that's awesome. I think 10th of the government teams and how many government teams were there, like?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, okay. Yeah, we're pretty respectful. Awesome. Oh, yeah. We'll approve. Well, thank you. I guess, city manager, any additional comments?
Do have a couple of comments. Wanted to let council know that this is a busy week with related to flood recovery items tomorrow. At about noon, there's, there's a, a big tour with various media representatives at Butt Rock that we will be participating in. And then Friday afternoon, almost the entire afternoon, we'll be meeting with Molly Urbina, who's the state flood recovery manager, representatives from HUD and other state officials to discuss the CDV GDR process and, and the city's viewpoint on that and requests for allocations in the future, in addition to just the other items associated with flood recovery that we're working on, that we need to provide them some information. And then on June 2nd, Reeves, from 8:00 to 10:00, Reeves Brown will be here and Reeves is the, the head of DOLA. And I know he wanted to meet with city council members and so if you can let us know by the 23rd whether or not you'll be able to attend that time, we would really, June 2nd, 8:00 to 10:00. And you'll see an invitation tomorrow. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. We have a lot of work going on and frankly, a lot of these conversations are dealing with reimbursements, direct allocation, and they're really gonna make a difference in the flood recovery as we move forward.
Thank you. City attorney, any comments?
Parent council, just one reminder that there is no council meeting next week.
Okay, thank you.